Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the March 28th, 2023 City Council, regularly scheduled meeting. And at this time, could I get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Mendoza?
Here.
Vice Mayor Meyer?
Here.
Councilmember Orlemans?
Here.
Councilmember Pearson?
Present.
Mayor Bryant?
Here. Okay, we do have a quorum. If you could join with me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
At this time, we will open public comments, and I'll turn to you, Margaret.
We'll take public comment in the council chambers, followed by Zoom public comment. If you're in person, please file a speaker card. If you're in Zoom, please raise your hand. At this time, the public is permitted to address the city council on items that are not on the agenda. Items listed under presentations, informational reports are on the consent calendar, and requests for future agenda items, new requests. Please save your comments for any other items that are on the agenda for that part of the meeting. Remarks are limited to three minutes per person, and your microphone will be muted after the timer has expired. I receive no written public comments for this part of the agenda. And while we encourage your comments, state law prevents the city council from discussing items that are not on their meeting agenda, and if appropriate, staff will follow up on them directly. I do have three speaker cards in person. I'll start with Janet Frazier.
Good evening, Mayor Bryant and fellow city council members. It's so good to see everyone tonight. My name is Janet Frazier. I'm the founder and executive director of the Network of Care. We're a nonprofit, and we feed families of children in hospitals. In December 2000, my two daughters were involved in a car accident. My oldest daughter Stephanie did not survive, and my youngest daughter Lindsay was critically injured. After sitting by Lindsay's bedside all night in the trauma unit, she had complications, and I stood up and I almost fainted. A kind nurse asked when I had eaten last, and I told her, I think it was Friday night. By this time, it was Sunday morning, so it was about a day and a half prior. I hadn't thought about eating at all. She came back with her sandwich with her in her hands like this and asked me to take a few bites. I will never forget the feeling of somebody doing so nice in the course of a horrific day, and that knowing that somebody cared. After Lindsay recuperated from her injuries, I approached Kaiser Walnut Creek about wanting to bring food for their families to help people like me. That was the number one thing that the families need, and they don't have any food, was what I was told. That was in January of 2004 with One Hospital Kaiser Walnut Creek. And since then, we have fed over 340,000 families in over 50 hospitals throughout the state of California with snack and meal bags called Bags of Hope, and they're filled with non-perishable food items. They make a huge difference to families in crisis when their child is suddenly hospitalized. We are volunteers without a paid staffer office, and early on, we struggled how to meet the demands of the hospitals as they saw such a value in these food bags. Several years ago, we found the answer, and it was with an amazing group of young adults with special needs who volunteer all year long at three local high schools, one being the Gateway Program here in Brentwood. It's a win-win for the families who are able to help and for the students who are learning valuable vocational skills. These skills will help them transition to adult life, prepare them with skills to hold and maintain jobs, and to live independently. The students shop for food with their teachers, assemble the food into snack and meal bags called Bags of Hope, and they prepare them for shipping to the hospitals throughout the state. They do this every week throughout the school year and summer school. Some of the skills the students are learning, they have to do the math to determine how many cases of food are needed, given the cases of food are in different quantities. They must inventory the food, monitor the expiration dates. They need to work as a team to assemble the items into the bags and do the QA to ensure everything is packed appropriately. They then put... ...shipping tags which have to be compared to other documents and place the tag on the box. We would not have been able to do or to able to help the number of families we have without the help of these students. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Juan Venegas, followed by Ian Cohen.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council. My name is Juan Venegas, and I'm a field representative for the NorCal Carpenters Union here in Contra Costa County, Local 152. I represent 3,500 carpenters in Contra Costa County. Carpenters join this organization because they desire to learn the craft of carpentry. They desire to earn a livable wage and have a beneficial career. Our members are part of great communities all throughout Contra Costa County. That is why I believe labor standards language is critical for future construction projects. It should be used as a guideline for developers to follow. Specific language like apprenticeship, healthcare, and local hire would set the standard for developers when it comes time to bid on a project. Our members go through a carpenter's apprenticeship program. The program has a duration of four years and allows members to learn skills on the job and in a classroom setting with certified instructors. As they progress through the apprenticeship, they also obtain college credits. All this is done while earning a livable wage to provide for their families. Apprenticeship programs elevate the living standards of individuals by providing a debt-free education. With this in mind, carpenters would be able to secure jobs in their communities and give them a sense of purpose and belonging. Healthcare is an important part of this language since roughly 50% of California construction workers rely on some type of public assistance to be able to provide a type of healthcare for their families. The lack of healthcare is a reason that keeps workers away from the industry and creates a shortage in the workforce. Healthcare is something that is provided to our members during their journey. I am sure anyone with a family knows the importance of having healthcare and benefits along with earning a livable wage. Local hire would benefit the community several ways. Carbon emissions would be reduced since less miles would be driven to get to work. The families within the community would have a better work and life balance, which would allow for a greater quality of life. These families that help make up the community would have more opportunities for community involvement. The tax dollars of these residents would stay within the community because they wouldn't be commuting. By implementing labor standards language like apprenticeship, healthcare, and local hire into future construction projects, a level of standards will be created and cultivate a responsible market. The bar will be set for developers in this county. In conclusion, I ask you this question. How can you, as the city council, better support the working class here in Brentwood? Thank you all for your time.
Thank you. The next speaker is Ian Cohen, followed by Kim Giuliano.
Good evening, council. I'll be providing our youth commission update tonight. As you all know, I'm Ian, the chairperson of our amazing youth commission. So next Saturday, if my calendar in my head is correct, is April 8th, and that is our first amazing, hopefully annual multicultural fair. And I'm not sure if the ad hoc's happy in me saying who's performing, but we will have amazing performances from Phil Am, the Filipino club, and Heritage. We have the EESA from Heritage, and we have a few other outside organizations, like AC Scent in Mexico. So that's gonna be very amazing, and I believe we have some food trucks that'll be set up in front of the community center. So that is April 8th from 1:30 to 4:00 p.m. right here in our city park and our community center. We hope to have the full council and staff show up and support our amazing youth commission, our amazing multicultural city. That's really what we're hoping to celebrate. For the youth commission, we did our last meeting, we picked T's and T's for our youth-friendly business for the month of March because they really support our high school community and clubs out here in this city. And we all know, especially the Liberty High School kids, love going over T's and T's in Heritage. We love going there on the weekends, and they're an amazing business. And also, I just want to give you guys the very heads up. June 23rd from 6:30 tonight is our kind of annual, except for the exception of COVID, youth commission pool party that supports our college senior scholarship fund. This is meant for middle schoolers, and if anyone knows middle schoolers, please help them sign up when our summer activity guide comes out, which hopefully, well, Bruce is not here, the director, but someone can like say when that will come out. The signup information will be on there, and that money goes and supports our scholarship fund, which we will be announcing the winners in a month or two. I don't know, our window just closed. Hopefully, you'll have more information next meeting about that and see what amazing seniors got our scholarship. And that's pretty much all I got. Please come to our meeting next Wednesday at 7:00 p.m. right here in chambers. We will be talking about some amazing items. And thank you so much, council, for your amazing support of the commission. We really appreciate it.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Kim Giuliano, followed by Danny Dorman.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I'm Kim Giuliano, and I'm representing Friends of the Brentwood Library. And I'm here to tell you about the Brentwood Literary Stroll, which is scheduled for May 7th. And first of all, I want to thank you for your support. This program is supported by a grant from the Economic Development Department, so thank you very much for that. Because of this program, we're able to have 10 really amazing authors in 10 different locations downtown. And people that come to the event stroll from business to business to listen to these different authors. And at each location, they're also provided with some light refreshments. And because of the support from the city, we're able to keep the price really affordable for attendees. And there we have some award-winning and bestselling authors this year, including Gail Sukiyama. So we're very excited that she's coming to Brentwood to be with us for the Literary Stroll this year. So I hope some of you will be able to attend. Again, this helps promote reading, the Brentwood Library, and our amazing downtown as well. And I will leave you some bookmarks here with the city clerk that each of you can have. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Danny Dorman, followed by Denise Duran.
Good evening, all. Not really prepared tonight, but I do want to say a couple of things. One, I am so sorry for your loss. As a parent and now a grandparent, I just can't imagine. But turning that into what you're doing now is amazing, amazing. And Ian, my guy, yeah, I can't wait for him to run for office. So I did want to start off positive before I get into my Debbie Downer voice. As everyone knows, I asked for a FOIA request regarding an incident I had with our city manager. I posted that stuff on my Facebook page, and I laid it out. For those who haven't seen it, you can join my Facebook page, so you can see it. It should be very clear that our city manager is derelict in his duties. That's probably the nicest way I can say it. Whether it is his secret society, whether it was that torn feathering that you guys had to go through to get the kumbaya together, how he twists items to put you guys in a bad spot or planning, his total disregard of trying to weed out those bad apples that is called staff, not all of staff, and how he knows you won't fire him because it takes four. Last year, when you guys renewed his contract, I said, he's gonna do something. He's gonna do something that's gonna put you all in a spot. And my latest incident, and again, if you go look at my Facebook page, I laid it all out. And hopefully, after you guys, if you take the opportunity to look at everything, maybe you guys will do something vis-à-vis an investigation, vis-à-vis, let's make sure this doesn't happen again. He's not an elected official, so he can go with impunity. Hopefully, you guys would at least bring it to the table and put it on the record as I've done. Thank you all.
Thank you. The next speaker is Denise Duran.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor Joel Bryant and Vice Mayor Meyer and city council members. Just a quick update as to what's been going on over at the local Brentwood Chamber of Commerce. I'm this year's Brentwood Chamber of Commerce president, for those that may not know. This month, we held a mixer at the Silvergate Apartments, which offers a central location for residents to enjoy a beautiful home with amenities, provides a residence here in Brentwood for those who may also be in that space where they are preparing for homeownership here in Brentwood. I want to thank Councilmember Orlemans for attending, and also want to thank those city leaders for attending as well from the city manager's office. And it really makes an impact. It definitely goes and promotes that sense of interest, connection, and I'll just go back to interest that our city has in our local business owners and developers, because our developers are also at a lot of those types of events as well. This month, we will also be, in the coming month of April, we will be recognizing a two-year anniversary with post-COVID ribbon cutting at Bliss Mind and Body on April 5th, which is in the Vic-Stewart's area. And our monthly mixer will be at Hot Work Studios, which is technically in Antioch. However, we're a local, we're a local community, so welcoming those businesses in Antioch and those Brentwood residents who also do their shopping in the greater east county. And I will also mention that Kevin Nunes is a longtime Brentwood business owner at Planet Beach with Planet Beach Spray and Spa. Of course, dignitaries and city officials and city staff are always warmly welcome. It is our greatest honor and pleasure to be able to introduce you for all that you do, the amount of time, effort, work, energy that goes into your, into what you do here to support the city. It's genuinely a privilege and honor to be able to show the residents and the business owners, these are the people who are working on your behalf. Also, just want to touch on some additional upcoming events. We've got Supervisor Diane Burgess's Mega Mixer that's gonna be happening April 19th. And with regard to the Brentwood Chamber, we have, we have our, is something that we do in collaboration with the city of Brentwood, which is huge. We will, we're also getting ready for Celebrate Brentwood, so with that, there'll be more information, and thank you again for your time.
Thank you.
I have no additional speaker cards in person. I do have two hands raised in Zoom. I'll call on Sinziana Todor, followed by Amy Tilly. Sinziana, go ahead.
Hi, good evening. I would like to speak along the lines of city Brentwood ethics and code of conduct violations by Councilwoman Pearson, referring in particular to the conduct with the public section. by Councilwoman Pearson, referring in particular to the conduct with the public section. Making the public feel welcome is an important part of the democratic process. And up until she got elected and sworn in, I never experienced such pressure to stay quiet and stay in my lane a lot for the past 20 years that I've been participating in city council meetings. The code of conduct says, be welcoming to speakers and treat them with respect. Members of the public were welcomed with high rolls and threatened repeatedly by this council member and her family with lawsuits. Also, it says, be fair and equitable in allocating public hearing time to individual speakers. She proved repeatedly to be a bully by continuing to squash what people have to say to keep us in line. What she does not know is that people of Brentwood will continue showing up and speaking up regardless of her threats. I say this because she made it very clear she's not open to hear any opinions from the public unless it fits her personal agenda. Also, it says, be an active listener. She does not excel at this. She keeps talking even over her fellow council members, prompting them to do the same, to defend the point that we're trying to get across. On top of that, she took extra time, if we remember in the last council session, when not appropriate, to tell Mr. Mayor how hurt she was, that he called the meeting back to order in the middle of her inappropriate argument. Also, there are many, many other incidents that are public record, on video, so it's up to you to go and analyze all of them. And I'm speaking on this not because I'm a sore loser or unprofessional bully. I was not aware there is a school for professional bullies. Maybe it's the law school she attended. I don't know. I have always participated in this process. I've been open, sincere, and provided my input on a lot of issues that impacted our community. But she would not know that because she's only been here a minute, and she has no interest on learning what Brentwood is about. Clear example is when she was wondering why people still talk about Measure L, completely out of touch. Plus, she takes cues from the city manager. There are public records to prove this. Vice Mayor and Mayor, I ask you to bring this issue as an agenda item, have a public discussion, and consider sanction or admonishment for this council member and her ethics violations. Please prove you are the leaders we learn to trust and respect over the years. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Amy Tilly. Amy, go ahead.
Hello. Good evening, everyone. This is Amy Tilly. I'm the executive director for Downtown Brentwood Coalition. I just had a couple, couple things I wanted to mention tonight. I wanted to make sure that the community and everybody listening is just aware of how much we really appreciate the work that the city did in the recent pressure washing that we had downtown. Downtown looks phenomenal, and we're just really appreciative of the public works team and the staff who helped coordinate that effort. It was quite an effort just to work with all the businesses and make sure they were, that it worked out okay for them. And I think the residents are really happy. We're getting a lot of comments about that, so I feel like a lot of residents are going to be really thrilled with the results, so thank you all for that. I wanted to also, just it's kind of a public service announcement, just mention that the farmer's market is going to be moving to 7:30 starting this weekend. So it'll start earlier for any early birds, and it'll go till 12:00. So that's the new hours for that. I wanted to say thank you to the Economic Development Department and Abraham Ricardo, and also Darren and Tim for the recent economic development, the workshops that were done last week, as far as the economic development grant program is concerned. Those were really, really well done and really helpful, and just very welcoming, and I, we just really appreciated that opportunity to talk about those programs. And then I'll just mention a couple of things we have going on. If you guys do follow us on @DowntownBrentwood, you'll see this stuff too, but we're launching the We Love Local Downtown Challenge in about a week. And it's going to be a completely free pass for residents and visitors, and it'll be a directory, but also like a rewards pass, so they can gain points for visiting local businesses. And we're really excited. It's going to launch in about a week, so just stay tuned for that. And then also, registration's open right now for the Bags and Brews the Cornhole Tournament. And this year, it is on Memorial Day weekend, and so we're going to do, we're going to honor the fallen on that day, and we're going to have a military tribute happening at 12:00 prior to that event start. So thank you guys so much. I know this is a lot of extra work. I know you guys, most of you, worked a full-time job today, and we just really appreciate you being there and going through these long agendas and just being here to support the community. I know it's just, it's totally extra, and we appreciate all the council and staff that does this for us. So thanks, you guys. Have a good night.
Thank you. I have one additional hand raised. Marisol Valles. Marisol, go ahead.
Hi, thank you so much. I just wanted to repeat what I mentioned during the workshop, so that was actually in public comments during a city council meeting. I wanted to see when there'll be a conversation with Pat Tenisha in regards, in regards to her name-calling and intimidation of the residents. I just want to remind us that residents do have every right to speak and be concerned and ask valid questions of any city council person. She was quite unacceptable during one of the first workshops. I would like you to please have a public conversation with her and explain that civility starts with her. We should not bully or ask residents to please not speak. Intimidation should not be acceptable. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I have no additional hands raised.
Thank you. At this time then, we will close public comments and move into informational reports from council members, committees, liaisons, and staff. I think I started at the right last time, so we'll start with Councilmember, Councilman
Good evening. Thank you for being here, everyone. Since the last meeting, I attended the Transit Employee Appreciation Day out at Tri-Delta Transit, the Chamber of Commerce mixer that was earlier mentioned, the ILG training and planning with the Planning Commission, and then the Tri-Delta Transit meeting that took place. This morning, I got the opportunity, and I'm not going to take all of the chief's thunder, but I got to attend the swearing-in of one of our new officers, which is always a great honor for a former police officer to watch somebody take into that or move into that role. But this one might have been even a little more special in that I think he's third-generation misquas with the Brentwood Police Department, and his entire family is part of law enforcement. So it's great to see the new members coming in, especially when we're having such a hard time of hiring first responders. Thank you.
Councilmember Mendoza.
Hello. Since the last time we met, I attended 2023 Legislative Briefing for New Legislation Overview with CalCities, attended Our Neighborhood Voices Wednesday Night Information Meeting, attended the Latino Caucus Public Relations and Strategic Plan Committee meeting as a Board of Directors, attended the Housing Community and Economic Development Policy Committee. We went over a lot of local control on that meeting, if you've heard me talk about that maybe once or twice. The ONV Leadership Meeting, the Cali Meetings, where we actually talked about tiny home villages for affordable housing. Let's see, we had a local resident meeting where I spoke about the housing bills and CalCities and their role in how they can get involved on local control. Watched the Planning Commission workshop. I love that the Planning Commission actually drove the conversation, and it really centered around resident feedback, which I really liked. And I think that, I like that they took over that meeting in that fashion, and they talked about what was important to them. Attended the East Bay Times Newsroom at Home State of Housing Market 2023, attended the League of California Cities Latino Caucus Board of Directors Meeting, attended the League of California Cities East Bay Division Meeting, where Steve Glaser and a couple of other legislators were at. It was a little disappointing, Steve Glaser did mention that out of all of the lobbying groups, cities and counties were the weakest link, which means our legislators actually don't respect what cities have to say. So we've got to take a stronger role if we want them to listen to us about local control. Attended a presentation from the Sunflower Alliance around oil and gas drilling, and presented to a homeowners association of about 300 people on Our Neighborhood Voices. Thank you.
Councilmember Pearson, thank you.
All right. Since our last meeting, I attended the League of California Cities East Bay Division Meeting that had Speaker Senator Glaser, Assemblymember Alex Lee, and a dynamic powerhorse, Liz Ortega, Assemblymember Ortega. I attended a fundraiser event for David Livesting, our sheriff, at the Sheriff's Ball, and worked on the FAT Committee, the Family and Children's Trust, under the direction of Supervisor Burgess to draft a report on organizations that should receive funding for women and children who experience trauma due to domestic violence. And Councilmember Orlemans and I, along with other council members, local council members, will be shadowing Senator Glaser this week and attending Educational, Health, Governance, and Finance Committee meetings at our state capitol.
Thank you. Attended two California Alliance of Local Elected meetings, the California City Legislative Briefing Overview for 2023, listened to, or attended a presentation by Sunflower Alliance about oil and gas drilling. Along with the mayor, I was thrilled to be a judge for the fourth grade coloring contest with teacher Andrea Ziegler from BUSD, the artist to be displayed at our Public Works Department's solid waste recycling trucks, and the theme was recycling contamination. And the entries were colorful and imaginative and informative, and it was really hard picking the winning bunch. I had a meeting with Amy Tilly with the Downtown Business Association, representing Leadership Roundtable, and the Director of the East Contra Costa Community Alliance Regarding Community Service Day, and the addition of a Discussion on Volunteer Recruitment dedicated page on our website. This is continuation of an item I brought last year, and I understand that the police department is also involved in that planning. Attended the Joint Workshop with Council and Planning Commission, and attended the East Bay Times webinar, State of the Housing Market 2023. One of the speakers was the Vice President of California Association of Realtors. In my Mayor's and Councilmember's president role for CalCities, I attended the City Leader Summit Prep Meeting with the keynote speaker. Last week, did the swearing-in of a Parks and Rec Commissioner. And by the way, the staff did an informational during that. It wasn't just the commissioners that did informationals. I loved that. I think it's something we should talk about. And then I also did a ride along with Meals on Wheels Diablo Region for the March for Meals campaign to bring awareness to Wheels on Wheels resources available to older adults. And that was especially an honor because I used to work there, so they work with elected officials when they do this campaign every March. And I was really, it was a special thing for me to be involved on the other end. Thank you.
Thank you. Since the last time we met, I also got to attend the new officer swearing-in this morning. And it is great to have our, a lot of our police officers, this young man included, have been lifelong residents of our community. And so it makes a big difference when you are protecting your family in addition to the others you're sworn to protect. And also, I attended the Tri-Delta Meeting, as well as the Tri-Delta Transit Employee Appreciation Day with the Vice Mayor. I participated in the coloring contest judging, and it is absolutely shocking how talented some of those 10-year-olds are. It's great to see. Also, I attended the special joint council and planning commission meeting, as well as I met with two of our neighboring mayors. Again, setting up an opportunity for us to do regional planning and participation to bring economic development and reasonable growth that fits each of our communities. It's not one size fits all, and we're also going to be joining with some of the other Bay Area mayors and going up to the state to see that our needs individually as an East County region are listened to. And again, push for as much local control as possible for as long as we can control our destiny in that area. And I don't have any further things to report at this time. So we will move into consent calendars, and I would like to pull Item B1. Do I have a motion on the rest of the calendar, or are there any other items that we'd like to pull?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adopt the consent.
Actually, I'm sorry, I was just looking for my number. I'd like to pull B6, please.
Mayor, absent Items B1 and B6, I'd like to make a motion to adopt the consent calendar.
Okay, we have a first.
A second.
Second, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Mr. Mayor, excuse me, the city clerk needs to read the ordinance title before the vote.
Thank you, Margaret.
An ordinance at the City Council of the City of Brentwood approving a zoning text amendment, RC 23-002, which would amend Chapter 17.030 definitions in Chapter 17.660, encroachments into required yards of the Brentwood Municipal Code.
Thank you. Now, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It is unanimous, and we will go back to Item B1, which is a proclamation proclaiming April 2nd, 2023 as Autism Awareness Day and April as Autism Awareness Month. We do have a lot of families and representatives here for this item, and it was requested to be pulled by Vice Mayor Meyer and Councilmember Pearson. And so if both of you could join with me up at the dais, and we will get the mic over. In addition to the autism awareness, we also have a proclamation for World Down Syndrome Day that we will be presenting as well. And so which would you like to present? Both of you are going to present on the same item? Please, I will turn this to the Vice Mayor. She is.
Thank you, Mayor. We would also like to invite up Frances Crone and anyone else who's interested in being a part of this recognition. Frances Crone is a special education teacher for the Gateway Program through the Liberty Union High School District, and she's going to share a few words with us. We're also going to read the proclamations and present them, and then you can take photos if you want to do that. Okay? And you can very definitely speak into that if you'd like, or you want to do that now, or you would like us to?
Read your proclamation first.
We'll read the proclamation first. Did you want to read one, and I'll read the other?
I'm standing here as a parent of a child who has autism, cerebral palsy, 3-P deletion, and I'm so appreciative for everything that you all do. So it gives me, it's an honor to read this proclamation right now. Whereas the Center for Disease Control, the CDC estimates that one in every 44 children in the United States are among the more than 2 million Americans living with an autism spectrum disorder. Each person with autism has a distinct set of strengths and challenges, and whereas autism is a reality that affects millions of families every day. And while our nation has made progress in supporting those with ASD, we are only beginning to understand the factors behind the challenges they face. And whereas ASD is reported to occur in all racial, ethnic, and socioeconomic groups, the lifelong nature of ASD and other developmental disabilities require a variety of types of assistance at different points in the individual's life. And whereas, a variety of public and private organizations and agencies strive to provide quality care, support, resources, and services to children and adults with ASD to enable them to live as. resources, and services to children and adults with ASD to enable them to live as independently as possible and reach their full potential. And whereas, in 2007, April 2nd was designated by the United Nations as World Autism Awareness Day. On this day, supporters around the globe light up their homes and businesses blue. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the City Council of the City of Brentwood does hereby recognize April 2023 as Autism Awareness Month and encourages the citizens of Brentwood to learn what more they can do to support individuals on the autism spectrum and their family. Thank you.
And I am also the mother of a special needs child and worked with this population through, for several years with nonverbal, children with nonverbal autism, and then continuing my role now with young adults with special needs. So I'm going to read the World Down Syndrome, which ended up happening last month, but we did not have a recipient, and we thought it would be a beautiful thing to combine the two since you work with multiple populations. Whereas Down Syndrome remains the most common chromosomal condition diagnosed in the United States. The Center for Disease Control estimates that about 6,000 babies born in the United States each year have Down Syndrome. Each person with Down Syndrome has different talents and the ability to thrive. And whereas World Down Syndrome Day is the day that the Down Syndrome community creates a single global voice advocating for the rights, inclusion, and well-being of people with Down Syndrome. And whereas the message of this year's theme, "With Us, Not For Us," is key to a human rights-based approach to disability, which views people with disabilities as having the right to be treated fairly and have the same opportunities as everyone else. This means working with people with Down Syndrome and others to improve their lives, not just for them. And whereas people with Down Syndrome attend school, work, participate in decisions that affect them, have meaningful relationships, vote, and contribute to society in many wonderful ways, now therefore be it proclaimed that the City Council of the City of Brentwood does hereby recognize March 21st, 2023 as World Down Syndrome Day, and encourages the citizens and organizations of Brentwood to learn how they can better represent and work with people with Down Syndrome, not just for them. Thank you, and I'm very, very pleased that you're all here.
Thank you so much, Vice Mayor Suzanne Meyer, and Mayor, and Councilmembers, and everyone that's here. Gateway has been part of the community now for 16 years, and so small program that is just continuing to grow larger. And we serve the students that are 18- to 22-year-olds within the community, and the students come from a lot of different backgrounds. And we work with students with autism, with Down Syndrome, and many other disabilities. And what's amazing is to see how incredibly independent and successful these students can be when they are part of the community. And as a whole, Brentwood has been amazing, an amazing part of that. We teach the students how to ride the city bus, how to do different jobs within the community, and then they spend four years at our Gateway Program and, you know, doing activities like what Janet Fraser had shared, packing the bags for the hospitals. We also have students who volunteer for Hope House, which is the Contra Costa Food Bank, and they pack groceries there for people in the community. A lot of the students, once they leave Gateway after four years, they get jobs in the community. And so if, you know, if any of you shop at the Balfour Safeway, we have students that work there that came to Gateway. We have students across, over at the Second Street Safeway that came to Gateway. We have a young lady here who works at a day program, who also was a Gateway student. This year, we hired two of our students back. One works in the, sorry, one works in the cafeteria, and one is actually a paraprofessional sub in our school district, too. Our new transition specialist, Tanya Starr, has also been making a lot of connections in the community and with the city, and we're looking at more opportunities for our students. And they're doing training opportunities at Grocery Outlet and Food Max. And I mean, over the last 16 years, we've had students who've done Adopt Park in Oakley, we've done the Meals on Wheels, we've done Loaves and Fishes. I mean, there's just, you know, CVS, TJ Maxx, you know, and there's a lot of organizations that we, you know, don't realize are there and available to help students with disabilities, young adults with disabilities. And, you know, Regional Center is a big part of that, and as you guys are probably familiar with as well. And with that being said, you know, we play a really big part in that, and our whole Gateway team, our school district, and everything that we do, we do for the students, for the community, and it's a really, really great honor. Thank you so much.
If you'd like to come up and do a group photo while we present the proclamations, we can have staff take it, Frances, so you don't have to.
Mr. Superintendent, would you like to say anything?
I'm good.
Are you sure? Okay. Before we go further, I do want to thank them again for everything they do. And like has been said, if you get to go to Safeway on Balfour, there's a young man by the name of Chevy that will make sure you are taken care of. And he got his training and inspiration through this program. And it's just, it's phenomenal for all the families in our community that they, these young people through this program are genuinely an inspiration to us because no one has told them they can't. They have been told they can do whatever it is that's in their heart, and they do. And it's just an inspiration. So thank you so much. I know it's a labor of love, but you help us all understand, you know, more about what humans can do and what love does. So thank you. So if I can do it without choking up, I'll go to this next item, B6. So Vice Mayor?
Thank you. This came from a discussion about the annual progress report for the housing element and how we are reporting out on our progress in this area of affordable housing. What we're trying to do as a city to increase the availability of it. And so we did make some changes. The increase of the affordable housing percentage from 10% to 13% is noted in there. But what isn't noted in the progress report is that we are now not accepting in lieu fees for developments nine and under homes. And so this is actually, it was a big move on our part, and I felt like it really should be included in the progress report, to show that we are doing our best as a city to make that availability there. So it was really just a minor, just wanted to share that update with everyone, just to understand where that question came from. Not expecting any changes, not any delays or anything like that. This is just a matter of including this update in the Housing Element Progress Report, so the state is aware of the work that we're doing in this area. Thank you. And with that, I would like to make a motion to approve B6.
Well, can I add just really quick?
Of course.
I think it's important, we fought really hard for this, the prior council, and we feel very strongly about affordable housing. If it was up to us, we probably would have gone higher because of state laws. We were kind of trapped into a 13%. But we do have families that have started moving into the affordable housing off of Walnut, and the families were okay with us knowing that they were moving in. And there was one family of eight who lived in a trailer, a family of eight, and now they have their first home. So every single affordable housing house makes a difference. So to the developers that are doing it, thank you so much. I appreciate it more than you'll ever know. And we will continue to fight for affordable housing even at the state level.
Thank you. And is that a second?
That is definitely a second.
We have a first and a second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It is unanimous. We will move into item C, Public Hearings. Item C1, we will hear a request for approval of an eight-lot subdivision, Inez Estates. The project includes a mitigated negative declaration vesting tentative subdivision map, design review, and a variance. And Senior Planner Crystal DeCastro will present. Crystal?
Thank you, Mayor Bryant. Good evening, members of the council. The project before you tonight is the Inez Estates, a subdivision for eight single-family homes by Cyrus Land Investments LLC. The subject site is approximately 4.08 acres, located south of Lone Tree Way and west of Gann Street. Currently, the subject site is vacant and is an irregular shape, similar to a scaling trapezoid with a tail end at the southeast portion of the site. The surrounding uses include, to the north, Lone Tree Way and single-family residential subdivision; to the south, a 30-foot-wide easement owned by the East Contra Costa Irrigation District, and a three-acre parcel developed with single-family residence. To the east is Gann Street, Gann Street Park, it Park, and a single-family residential subdivision known as Sterling Preserve. And to the west, a single-family residence, Valley Oak Nursery, and Union Pacific Railroad beyond. As found in the general plan, the site is designated residential very low density, which allows for a density of 1.1 to 3 units per acre with a midpoint of 2 units per acre. The site is within zoning district R112, which allows for single-family residential uses as proposed by the project. As shown here and reoriented for a better view, the proposed project includes eight single-family residential parcels ranging from 12,000 square feet to 20,895 square feet in size. Parcel A, located on the south portion of the site, is a 1.08 acre parcel that includes the city sewer easement and an East Contra Costa Irrigation District easement, which will be retained and maintained by the applicant. The subdivision map approval requires an exception to the general plan density transition policy on the southern portion of the sites for three lots, lots 2, 3, and 4. The variance is for three lots, lots 1, 2, and 5. The density transition and variance requests will be discussed in more detail later in the presentation. Oops. Access to the site will be via Lescunzo Lane connecting with Gann Street. Full right-of-way improvements would be constructed, including curb, gutter, and the continuation of the sidewalk on Gann Street onto Lone Tree Way for pedestrian access. The project site is consistent with the general plan density at a density of 1.96 units per acre. Per the general plan density transition policy, lots facing or abutting existing residential lots of one acre or more are required to be a minimum of 20,000 square feet. In this case, the property of the site, the property south of the site is three acres in size, and lots 2, 3, and 4 are below 20,000 square feet, having a range of about 12,000 to 15,000 square feet in size. However, modifications to this requirement can be granted if the adjacent property has a similar land use or zoning designation that would enable the future subdivision of the adjacent property into lots of a size similar to those planned in the proposed subdivision, even though the property owner has no present intention to subdivide the property. The three-acre parcel to the south has the same zoning and general plan use designation as a proposal. Therefore, this three-acre lot would also be enabled to subdivide the lots of a similar size to those planned in the subdivision in the future. Additionally, as required by the general plan, the applicant has made a good faith effort to secure response from the adjacent parcel owner. The parcel is consistent with the zoning development standards, with the exception of lots 1, 2, and 5 as highlighted in the following table. These items require variance. Lots 1 and 2 exceed the maximum 150-foot lot depth, and Lot 5 requires a lot width and lot frontage less than the required development standard. The requested variances provides for a development that would occur in a logical and orderly manner, consistent with the policies and the goals of the general plan. When the application was originally submitted, staff worked diligently with the applicant to reduce the number of lots to meet the midpoint density requirement as found in the general plan, and thereby avoiding a need for a rezone. After reviewing several iterations of the map, working with the applicant to reduce the number of lots, and discussing possible design solutions, it was determined that the optimal design, due to the irregular lot shape of the subject site, would require variance for three of the proposed lots. The proposed configuration of the subdivision respects the midpoint density and creates an efficiently aligned connection to Gann Street and Teal Court across the street. The eight residential homes includes a variety in unit plans, with three home plans and two architectural styles, farmhouse and craftsman. The proposed architecture is uniquely designed, allowing for increased variation of building design and massing throughout the subdivision. All of the plans offer decorative garage doors with glass inserts, flat concrete tile roof, decorative gables and details, and deep-set entryways. The proposed homes are designed to meet all applicable city development standards to create a quality neighborhood in accordance with their residential design guidelines. In conclusion, the project is consistent with the goals and policies of the general plan and zoning code, and complies with the residential design review guidelines. Additionally, the Planning Commission held a hearing on February 28th and reviewed the project. At that meeting, the Planning Commission recommended the City Council approve the project. Council's approval tonight would include the adoption of the mitigated negative declaration vesting tentative map, including the density transition exception, variance, and design review. This concludes the presentation, and staff is available for any questions. Thank you.
Are there any clarifying questions of staff at this time? Seeing none then, at this time, I will open a public hearing. And Margaret, do we have any public comments?
I believe we need to hear from the applicant first, and they'll get 10 minutes. And I believe that Sean Munger is on behalf of the applicant. Go ahead if you wanted to speak. You have 10 minutes.
It's okay. You know what, Sean? I'm here. Well, I'll take it from here for just a moment. Sorry about that. So Jackie Sino here. Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. I appreciate the opportunity just to speak on behalf of the project for a few short moments. That was Sean Munger. He is our consultant with NGO. I asked him just to be available if there are any questions regarding topography, soils, anything in the reports that you wanted to run by him. I also have a couple of members of my team that we can answer any questions that you might have. So just to iterate what Crystal had mentioned, I've had the property, I bought it back in 2018, so I've spent over five years trying to work out a plan that is acceptable and fits with the requirements of the city ordinance. It is a very irregularly shaped parcel, and so it's been a little bit challenging to actually get the lot count. So I started out with the two parcels, 11 lots, and then over a period of time, I've worked with staff, with Crystal, also with Eric, with Alan, also met with Alexis, and began to go through and see how we can try to avoid having to do a PD or any type of a rezone and stay within the city standards as much as possible. And over a period of five years, I've done as much as we can- And over a period of five years, I've done as much as we can with the parcel to get the eight lots, reducing it from 11. You know, again, Crystal had gone over, it's a very thorough staff report, so I'm proposing the eight lots, three-floor plans, different elevations, two different elevations, farmhouse and craftsman. It's a very straightforward project. Again, whatever questions that you might have, I'm happy to answer. I don't want to go into too much detail, but I appreciate the opportunity to be able to present tonight.
Thank you. Are there any questions for the applicant this time?
I don't have a question, but it's almost like a comment. You hear us say a lot, like stick to the general plan, and I want to say thank you because it's really close to the two units per acre, and that means a lot to the residents in Brentwood, so thank you for that.
Absolutely. Thank you.
You're certainly welcome to use the rest of your time, or if you've got nothing else, we can move forward.
OK. Burnell? Yes, absolutely. Any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This time, we'll open public comments.
I don't have any speaker cards for the chambers. I do have two hands raised in Zoom. I'll call on Danny Dorman. I think in the chambers. There we go.
I'm sorry, Margaret. I was lazy. I figured I'll just do it here. OK. Good evening again. I prove that the squeakiest wheel gets the grease. Actually, I have to give that credit to Councilwoman Mendoza. I remember when I first started paying attention to city business, I saw how she came up, data in hand, ready to rumble. There will be a point to this. For me, this started with trying to understand why a person has to pay for privacy and safety. And I'm talking about not what I'm getting ready to get into, but all future developments. This originally fell on deaf ears from the developer and council. In fact, no one in planning had even considered asking the question, will you, Mr. Developer, add privacy and protection to new homeowners? It still didn't move anyone in the city, probably because I called it a fence and not the purpose of what a fence does, privacy and protection. Then I brought up the absence of mailboxes, and I'm talking about Kindred and Balfour. Again, members of the city said it wasn't a city problem. Both the city and developer tried to blame USPS. But I pushed back because I saw seniors stuck in the ether of excuses for not doing the decent thing and to stop griping. I bring it up now instead of the next agenda item because thankfully, it will be discussed today on the future of land use. I hope it goes beyond mailboxes and includes privacy and protection, because these are things that I don't even understand why we're having this conversation. Planning didn't understand it either. I know they ask now. I don't know why they need to ask at all. So when you speak, and maybe you can ask the question of the team that wants to develop this new site. Are you going to provide mailboxes, and are you going to provide privacy and protection? It just seems like it doesn't make sense, but I'm here to tell you from experience two things. One, Shea does not like old people and don't care about seniors. And two, we have to talk about it because they're trying to make a buck any way they can. So, thank you.
The next speaker is Carolina Villaseca. Carolina, go ahead.
Hi. Yes, just a quick question for those of us listening and who might not know, what is a negative declaration? If somebody could just let us know what that is in terms of this project? Thank you.
Thank you. I have no additional hands raised and no speaker cards.
At this time, we'll close public comment. And before I address the question of the caller, I do need a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion to close public hearing. Second.
We have a first and a second. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? It is unanimous. Staff, if we could address what a negative declaration is. Thank you.
Sure. I'm going to pass it over to our Sequo consults, because I think they would be better at providing information regarding this question. Our name is Christina Irwin from De novo, and she's on Zoom.
Hello. Good evening. My name is Christina Irwin with De novo Planning Group. I'm a principal planner, and my specialty is in writing sequo documents for environmental compliance. A negative declaration quite simply is a document that discloses environmental effects of a particular project or action, but such that significant or potentially significant effects are mitigated to a less-than-significant level through the inclusion and adoption of specific mitigation measures. Those measures are tracked by the city and implemented throughout the project, whether it be during construction or during operation. And the mitigation monitoring plan serves as a co-document with the mitigated negative declaration to guide development of the project in an environmentally sensitive way. So in short, it's an environmental compliance document, and there are no significant and unavoidable environmental effects, and all effects can be mitigated to a less-than-significant impact conclusion.
Thank you very much. I believe that should have answered the question. I know this is very complicated stuff. That's why we need experts to explain it. But at this time then, is there any council discussion on this item?
I do have one question. Actually, it's for the council. There's a lot of noise in the public about conflict of interest, and I think that a good thing that we could do before, and if you don't feel comfortable, you don't have to say it, but I think we should tell the public and our residents, do we have a conflict of interest with anyone we're voting on, especially when it comes to development? That way, it'll avoid anyone thinking that anyone might have a relationship, or their business might have a relationship, or anything along the lines with developers. So I'm just here to say, I have no relationship with the developer at all whatsoever. We've never even had a private meeting, so I have no conflict. I don't know if anyone else wants to.
I would fully expect that anyone on council that does have a conflict of interest would recuse themselves.
That has come up before, and we were in the middle of a meeting when the conflict came up. So I would say that, but we've had instances where it has happened, and we didn't find out until after the fact.
I have no conflict of interest.
I have no conflict of interest. Should that ever occur, I will tell you personally. I take it very seriously, and I have counsel with our professional, our legal counsel, who are very diligent to make sure that all of the council members adhere to the law. And so I'm coming.
And to be clear, I have had to recuse myself, not about a development, but something else that connected to a previous job. So there isn't shame in that. It's just a matter of being transparent about it.
Sure.
I don't have any conflicts with anybody. I don't have relationships with developers. But if I did have some, as we have in meetings, I would recuse myself on anything that come up, so.
Beginning with basically what the mayor started off with, I think the way I understood it to be set up is if I had a conflict, I had to make people aware before the meeting and when it started, I would recuse myself from the project. Unless we're going to do this on every item we listen to, I don't know why it has to be done for a specific developer. I do not know this developer. I've never had an issue. I've never had a business dealing with them. I do not have any conflict, but I don't understand why we're doing it specifically with builders. If we're going to do it with builders, let's do it with every item we look at from now on, because it doesn't make much sense to me just to pick it against one.
I would love to do it for every item. I mean, I think it's the right thing. I'm going to do it with every single development and every single business that comes forward, coming forward, because there's too much noise out in the public. So that's why I'm doing it. So you don't have to do it every time. I'm going to do it every time.
OK.
OK. And then, oh, discussion. Again, I just want to say, thank you so much for sticking to the general plan. I mean, you have no idea how much that means to the residents. And I mean, people have called me about this, because we did notice it was 11 units, and it went down to eight, and we truly, truly appreciate that. Thank you so much.
And can we ask one final question? If you have a few minutes to address the question from the previous public commenter about fences and mailboxes, is that something you're comfortable discussing?
Yes. So if I understood the question, can you phrase the question? Let me know exactly what you'd like me to speak on, and I can do that.
I'm hoping I can repeat this. He's not here. But the question was, as the development is launched, are the fences and the mailboxes going to be available to residents as they move in? Or are they going to have to wait for a period of time, or 50% of the development to be built?
No. You know, usually, different developers do it different ways, but usually when it's a small lot project, I mean, maybe I do two phases, maybe four foundations, and then pour the second, or who knows? If it's a strong market, maybe I pour all eight. But anybody that moves in, all the fences will be in when those homes are completed. I mean, of course, if I start one lot and maybe only pour four foundations, they'll be staggered. That is not atypical. But when a family moves into a project and they move into their home, that fencing will be installed. That is not atypical. Second, in regards to the mailbox, the mailbox will more than likely be a cluster mailbox, and then the location of the mailbox is always determined by the postmaster. So usually, the process is that the developer would go to the postmaster and show them the plan, and then they would designate an actual location for that mailbox to go based on what their requirements are, and then we would adhere to that.
Thank you very much.
Hopefully, that makes it clear.
Yeah, thank you.
While you're at the podium, I do have one question. I found everything to be phenomenal and consistent with our general plan. But one of the questions I have in that area, as you may, I'm quite certain you're already aware, there is a school that's being built, is going to bring additional congestion to the Lone Tree corridor, specifically in that area. Lone Tree bows from two lanes to one lane, which is often quite congested. Had there been any studies? And specifically, I looked, there was a study about the sound from traffic. Any studies on the increased amount of traffic? I know it's only eight homes.
Yes.
That may be created by the addition of your properties there.
Yes. And so in the packet, there is a letter that came from Saxelby Acoustics, who did the noise study. And so I guess in short terms, in the general plan, when you did the general plan update, I forget exactly when that was, but when they did the general plan update, they assessed for the maximum number of units with the maximum number of people that would be on those residential streets, including schools, if there's any other facilities, shopping centers, et cetera. So given that, this letter that Saxelby Acoustics put together right after I came before the Planning Commission in the later part of February articulates that even with the maximum amount of traffic, which we are not at right now, even with the build-out of the school, any additional units, we will still be under the actual noise thresholds that are allowed by the city, by the general plan, with the inclusion of the eight-foot sound wall that I'm required to put in. So they put this letter together in response to some of the concerns that came up at the Planning Commission meeting about noise, especially, like you said, with the build-out, with the school, with additional units. So this letter just confirms that we'll still be under those thresholds, even with the additional traffic on Lone Tree Way.
OK. Thank you.
OK, no problem.
Is there any further discussion regarding this item? Seeing none, we have four votes on this item. And so do I have a motion regarding the first vote?
I will make a motion. As detailed in the staff report, I move to approve a resolution approving the mitigated negative declaration for this project.
I'll second.
We have a first and a second. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
It is unanimous. Vote number two.
As detailed in the staff report, I move to approve a resolution approving the vesting tentative subdivision map for this project.
First.
Second.
Second. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
It is unanimous.
Sorry.
Item three.
As detailed in the staff report, I move to approve a resolution approving a variance for this project.
Second.
We have a first and a second. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
It is unanimous.
And lastly, as detailed in the staff report, I move to approve a resolution approving the design review for the project's single-family homes.
And I'll second.
OK, we have a first and a second. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
OK, it moves forward. Thank you. OK, moving into item C two. This item pertains to extending a moratorium on new oil and gas development in the city, and our city attorney, Damon Brower, will present.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Honorable members of the city council, I just have a fairly brief report tonight on this item. By way of background, adopted in 1998, Chapter 17.680 of the municipal code regulates oil and gas drilling in the city. In March of 2022, the then-council directed staff to return with an interim moratorium on new oil and gas drilling in the city, while they're working on an ordinance that would target all uses within 3,200 feet of sensitive receptor areas, and if appropriate, a ban, a permanent ban on new oil and gas drilling. In April of 2022, you adopted an interim moratorium on new oil and gas drilling, so a permanent ordinance could be researched and drafted. And in May of 2022, the interim moratorium was extended for a period of 10 months and 15 days, as allowed by state law. Staff and special counsel have been studying the issues related to preparing the ban and preparing the ordinances, specifically two ordinances. The first being a permanent ban on new oil and gas drilling in the city, and the second being updating our current regulations. And that ordinance would only go into effect if the permanent ban was successfully challenged. So you'd still have regulations in place if the permanent ban went away for whatever reason. We're close to finishing both ordinances, but are not going to be able to complete them prior to the expiration of that 10-month-and-15-day period. So it's allowed by state law. Tonight's ordinance extends the moratorium for one year. And staff and counsel, we anticipate going to the Planning Commission and City Council either later this spring or early summer with both ordinances. And just regarding tonight's ordinance, after publication, we discovered a minor typo, and we'd ask that it be corrected in the motion. And specifically in section three, on packet page 382, there's a reference to the 10 months and 15 days, and that should be replaced with one year. The date that's in that section is correct. Again, packet page 382, there's a reference to 10 months and 15 days, and that should say one year, but the date that's there is still correct. And that concludes my report. We have myself, Special Counsel Kyler Raden, and Community Development Director Morris available to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Are there any questions of staff at this time? Seeing none, I will now open the public hearing, and I'll turn it to Margaret.
If you're in person, please file a speaker card with the form provided on the back of the chambers. If you're participating via Zoom, please raise your hand. Remarks are limited to three minutes per person, and your microphone will be muted after the timer has extended moratorium, and those are posted on the slide and on our website. I do have six hands raised. I don't have any speaker cards in person. Oh, yes, I'm sorry. I do have one speaker card in person. Ian Cohen?
Good evening, council. I know you're hearing a lot of me tonight, and you heard me a year ago when, or twice a year ago, when we're talking about this. I'm going to list off a few addresses and locations. Ross, TJ Maxx, Rayleigh's, Streets of Brentwood, a proposed motel on the land bordering Ross and Highway Four, right next to Sand Creek Sports Complex and the development behind there, Hanover and Garin, Loma West Elementary, Shadow Lakes. Guess what? They all have in common. They all have plugged and abandoned wells there. And the city did receive a legal error, which I'm not going to talk And the city did receive a legal error, which I'm not gonna talk about a year ago, and a layer came in, um, countering that. But basically, we need to put in these two ordinances right immediately. Well, I understand, not immediately, but we need to extend it and get them in place, because our youth is depending on council. We do not want these wells ever coming back. I understand this is 3,200-foot SD 1137, which I am proud of our state for passing that. But it's up to the council to tell the oil industry, stop bullying us, because they're not gonna threaten us and tell us, hey, we have this well right by homes and businesses that we might restart. In 2021, Stanford said, within 2.5 miles, there's still a very high chance, or not that high statistically, but still a chance of cancer and birth defects from these oil wells and the chemicals in the air. We have schools in the line of, of smell of these wells. We have people, neighbors in Shadow Lakes who have been waking up at four in the morning by the smell of oil and gas wells over by Kaiser, which unfortunately we have no control over. But by putting these two ordinances in place in this city, basically, all five of you are telling the world into oil and gas, no more. Their future is clean air, not waking up at four in the morning due to this air, not having your life put at risk. But remember, we're better in Brentwood, and that means your health will be better in Brentwood. Thank you.
The next speaker is Nigel Jessen.
Hello, council. Hello, mayor, and, um, councilors. Uh, I just wanna say that 30 years ago, there was like 5,000 people living here in Brentwood. And, uh, there was a lot of oil well drilling at that time. And now there's over 66,000 people here. I think Bob Nonnen has had his chance to pull oil out of the ground, and we really don't need it anymore. So I really want to support the total ban on oil in the area. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Carolina Villaseca. Carolina, go ahead.
Thank you. Um, first, I would like to thank Ian Cohen for his indefatigable actions on this topic. Um, and I support his future and the youth in Brentwood by asking you to completely ban oil and gas drilling. Just so you know what's at stake here, we have 278 plugged and abandoned wells in Brentwood. The majority, per the Calgem website, are concentrated in districts two and three. And these are surrounded by oil wells on unincorporated county land. In order to keep our residents safe from pollutants that are being emitted into the air, and also from future contamination of air, soil, and water, we need to send a strong message by banning oil and gas drilling to the county board of supervisors. Antioch has already taken the lead. They have their ban in place. If we follow, maybe other cities like Oakley will follow, and that will send a strong message to the county board of supervisors to also ban oil and gas drilling on unincorporated lands that bump up against Brentwood lands. Some of these oil, uh, oil wells are less than 900 feet from residential homes. And that is something that frankly is incredibly unhealthy. So I'm hoping you will all take this very, very seriously for the future of our youth and the health of our city. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Allison Chu. Allison, go ahead.
Hello, good evening, everybody. My name is Allison Cho, and I'm a high school student here in Brentwood, where I live currently. This means that today's item will directly affect my community and my life. As we already know, oil and gas drilling in our city can affect our health, our safety, even our property values. I'm here today to testify to the impact of oil and gas drilling and the climate crisis that it perpetuates, especially for young people like me. We've all felt the smoke in the air. We've all seen the extreme climate emergencies around the world. We all know our climate has already started to change for the worse. In fact, we grew up with it. The climate crisis is not and has never been something to ignore. Oil and gas drilling contributes more factors than imaginable to this dystopian future, which we are already partially living in. Council members, please take the right step on this item. You know what it is. The people of Brentwood are counting on you. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Nina DeMaya, DeMayno. Nina, go ahead.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Nina Domiano, and I'm a high school junior in Contra Costa. Tonight, I want to speak about the pressing necessity of a ban on oil and gas drilling. The proposition of an extension on the moratorium on oil and gas drilling in Brentwood is one that I'm very thankful for. It's a major step forward in a mission to protect our future from harmful drilling. To further the path that we're currently on, there must be a permanent ban on oil and gas drilling and development within city limits. Cities have a responsibility to provide both safety and security to its citizens now and in the future. Ending the moratorium on oil and gas drilling threatens both of these crucial facets and endangers the health of many Brentwood residents. It's a fact that the drilling of oil and gas puts pollutants into the air around us. And when these pollutants are compounded day after day, they can lead to often fatal health effects. People who live near oil and gas drilling sites have been proven to be exposed to toxins such as volatile organic compounds, ozone, carbon monoxide, toxic particulate matter, and nitrous oxide, just to name a few. These pollutants have been proven to cause asthma, cancer, respiratory diseases, preterm births, liver damage, and countless other adverse health effects. The risk to the health of the people of Brentwood, to the youth, families, and citizens here is simply too great a cost to pay for drilling. According to a study published in the journal Environmental Research, living near oil wells has been proven to be linked to reduced lung function and respiratory damage rivaling that of daily exposure to secondhand smoke, or that of living next to a freeway. In East County, there are hundreds of plugged gas and oil drills that if reopened, could expose residents to these tox, toxic chemicals. As a basic human right, every person deserves clean air that they can safely breathe. Every person deserves the right to know that they will not be at the risk of dangerous chemicals in the air. If we want to protect the land, people, and safety of Brentwood, there needs to be a permanent ban on oil and gas drilling. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Alexi Lindeman, followed by Cinziana Todor. Alexi, go ahead.
Hello, city council. Um, nice to see you again. It's, I'm in full support of extending the moratorium on oil and gas drilling, and in the future, hopefully soon future, placing a permanent ban on it. As all the other people have said before me, um, there's severe health and consequences on having oil and gas drilling so close to homes, or even the possibility of it. There's climate change at risk, and we're continuously facing that reality as it encroaches on us. And we've been here before. Um, I remember, we've been at this for like over a year now, coming to council meetings, and, um, it seems like everyone's pretty much on the same page. All the other votes have been unanimously voted to extend the moratoriums, or even in support, I've, um, in previous meetings, talking about being in support of a ban, but we're just waiting for the logistics. I'm here to urge you to push forward that ban, um, and you guys are all in favor. You know what to do. Just actually make it happen, um, for the future of youth, like your kids, grandkids, and everyone speaking here tonight. Thank you.
The next speaker is Cinziana Todor, followed by Paul Seager. Cinziana, go ahead.
Hi, good evening again. Thank you for the opportunity to speak on this item. I'm very passionate about it and been, uh, a part of the movement that sent a pretty strong message to the county when the application for oil and drilling at the, the border of Brentwood was proposed. Your main duty as elected official is the safety of the community you represent. For some of us, especially, um, residents in Brentwood Hills, it's already too late. As most of you know, they smell, um, they, they smell rotten egg type of odors on a daily basis, and inhale unhealthy overall air. Um, and that even made the news, if you remember, almost a couple of years ago. Uh, as, um, most of the speakers before me mentioned, based on research and studies published by reputable universities and medical research groups, negative health impact were identified as being caused by proximity to oil drilling sites. They range from premature childhood birth defects, upper respiratory conditions, cancers, and some MS cases were reported as well in the proximity of these wells. So let's protect our community, the children, and their future. Please adopt a permanent ban on oil and gas drilling. Um, I'm not really sure if the first step will be to, um, keep the moratorium in place. But I would encourage you to adopt a permanent ban on oil and gas drilling in Brentwood, and also request and work with the county to implement a permanent ban on oil and gas drilling in Contra Costa County. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Paul Seager. Mr. Seager, go ahead.
Uh, greetings, uh, Mayor Bryant and Brentwood City Council. My name is Paul Seager. I am currently a board member of the Diablo Water District, who is also a groundwater sustainability agency, like yourselves. The great thing is, is that we all share wearing the same hat of, of a responsibility for groundwater sustainability, that we protect the, uh, the East Contra Costa sub-basin. And, um, the five of you all have a voice in protecting the groundwater. It doesn't take much research to find that the record shows, um, uh, contamination from oil and gas drilling, um, to groundwater supplies, which is a duty, one of the duties that you're charged with. So with that, just to say that the Diablo Water District has, uh, put forward a resolution, um, stating that we stand against oil and gas drilling. Um, and we serve water for part of Nitesan, part of, uh, Buffle Island, and all of Oakley. And, um, we have sent our, our wishes around. Some of you have received emails from me. The Sigma Plan that you passed, the, uh, the State Sustainable Groundwater Management Act, Sustainability Plan that you passed, uh, last year, the beginning of last year, actually suggested that, that the Sigma Group, which you are a part of as council members, um, could work together to take a position on oil and gas drilling for our particular region. And what that will take is it will take a matter of, of actually you as individuals reaching out to your particular representative, to that group. And you can attend those meetings and start that conversation. And I'll tell you what, the Diablo Water District, I know, would, would absolutely appreciate any assistance in moving forward with protecting the groundwater. That is, uh, one of our number one, you know, uh, uh, goals, and, uh, we would look forward to it. And with that, I would just, I would urge you to, uh, to move forward with this urgency ordinance, extending for the additional, uh, year, the moratorium on new gas and, um, and oil development in the city of Brentwood. And, uh, thank you for, for taking this on. It's very much appreciated. You guys are doing a great job. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Caesar Agiri. Caesar, go ahead.
Hello. Uh, thank you very much for having me. Uh, I'm actually not local. I'm from Kern County, the number one oil-producing county in California. And I honestly, it, it's very refreshing to hear that there is a council in California that cares about public health. Dealing with Kern County is very difficult. So I'm, I'm happy that the public is in good hands and realize that, you know, along with some of the concerns that, you know, have been raised, the, our local Kern, the Western Water District, sells fresh water to oil companies, and a single well can use up to 8 million gallons of water to produce the, the crude that it does make. And, uh, an amazing piece of investigative journalism done by Janet Wilson from the Palm Desert Sun, um, in an article from June 29th, 2022, actually uncovered that the state, because of their lack of inspectors, does over-the-phone inspections, uh, to a lot of sites, especially sites that have low well density. Uh, they like to send inspectors where there's a lot of wells, and they can get a lot of bang for their buck. So they tend to not send inspectors to wells that aren't surrounded by a lot of other wells. Unfortunately, what that led to was a sweeping investigation, uh, all over California, and specifically in Bakersfield, close to where I live, that uncovered leaking wells next to a brand-new development, two years old, that was also next to a school and a church, leaking wells in the parking lot of a, of a Kaiser Permanente, leaking wells in a park, leaking wells behind our police department. And all of these wells were found to be leaking at explosive levels, because we cannot rely on enforcement. And having this moratorium is real protections that, um, aren't gonna depend on enforcement that actually doesn't exist. So thank you very much, and you are very inspiring. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Rohan Tiagi. Rohan, go ahead.
Good evening, council members. Um, my name is Rohan Tiagi, and I'm speaking as a high schooler in our town and an active member in numerous environmental organizations across our county. I, like many other youth here today, am here to speak on item C2 to extend our city's moratorium on the ban of oil and gas drilling. Last year, more than 300 members of our communities across East Contra Costa marched in Antioch to put an end to oil and gas drilling, many of them being high schoolers who live and attend school with, within proposed oil and gas drilling sites that will have the freedom to flourish if the moratorium is not extended. House is acceptable in a county that has stated that they will prioritize the implementation of its climate action plan in order to achieve greenhouse gas reductions as soon as possible. We must understand that this is not a matter of economics, nor pandering to the interests of oil and gas drilling companies that somehow never appear to speak at these meetings. This is a matter of the people. East Contra Costa County already has asthma rates in the 80th percentile of California, and who knows how those rates will change if we do not take action now. Our moratorium has been effective and has set a precedent for the county. And so it would truly be commendable for our city to continue to uphold our standards. As I finish off my comment, I would like to urge the council to implement a permanent ban on oil and gas drilling within city limits. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Najori Tranquina. My apologies if I pronounced your name.
How good.
Uh, my name is Najori. I'm a recent high school graduate. I'm calling in to support this very important extension of the oil and gas ban. This is crucial to protect the health and safety of community members and the climate. Echoing others, many studies show the negative effects of oil and gas drilling, especially affecting frontline communities from adverse birth effects to cancers and respiratory issues among various contaminations, pollutants, and hazards to groundwater and air. So please continue to put people in our futures over profit and continue this ban permanently. In doing so, I hope your actions will continue to influence others to do the same. Um, I'm also from outside of Brentwood, so also inspirational, and I hope we can, yeah, move into a future free of fossil fuels. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Charles Davidson. Charles, go ahead.
Uh, good evening, uh, council members, mayor, and residents of Brentwood. Uh, good evening, uh, council members, uh, mayor and residents of Brentwood. Um, I'd like to talk about the Deer Valley Road uh, oil well that is near your um, city uh, over uh, within, right on the uh, southern border of Antioch. Um, that well is um, has a very high concentration of methane and other gaseous hydrocarbons. People have smelled it and made complaints in the Brentwood Hills neighborhood, as you know of, I'm sure. Um, there, there was also um, complaints to, formal complaints made to the air district um, with methane concentrations and the Deer Valley Road oil well operator would not let the air district enter the site for approximately four months. That oil is not really uh, ideal for Contra Costa County refineries because it's, it's extremely light and our refineries over here are more designed for heavy crudes. Uh, you're from the Kern County crude that the gentleman was talking about. Um, and uh, and that's because it's very light and very gaseous, you know, so the, the well is um, uh, has multiple complaints because of that. So it's not just thick oil, but it's actually something that um, enters people's um, lungs very, very easily from a distance away. Um, the Deer Valley Road operator also wants to drill a wa- uh, wastewater disposal well um, within uh, a hundred yards or so of the um, uh, the um, Diablo Water District um, um, property line. Uh, and it's going through the aquifer that is used by the Diablo Water Board. Um, the, the, I, I hope that your ban is um, in the strongest language and, and hopefully permanent. Um, and you need to really send a message to Contra Costa County because they're allowing um, these drillers to go on their property right next to municipalities, including uh, over in Deer Valley Road, there was a proposed senior um, residential facility over there that is very questionable now. It was right on the other side of the fence. And so it's questionable now that that will be appropriate for that kind of usage. So the, when the county allows this behavior, it affects the um, ability of a city to grow and develop and will affect future residents for um, not only places like Brentwood but Antioch and beyond. So you need to have solidarity with these other communities and send a strong message to Contra Costa County. Thank you very, very much and have a good evening.
Thank you. The next speaker is Marisol Valles. Marisol, go ahead.
Thank you so much. Um, I want to take a moment to thank the youth in our community and ask them to please continue to organize and speak as, speak up as you are doing today and have done throughout the years. You're bringing much-needed hope during this time. Um, I ask that the council approve the extension of the moratorium on new oil and gas drilling. Also, I hope when this comes back next year or when it needs to come back, it's not an extension, but a permanent ban. Um, I do have a question that came up, just kind of what the previous caller said and what the city of Brentwood is doing to communicate to the county about also having them ban any oil and gas drilling near um, the Brentwood, Brentwood city limits. So if there's any updates on, on what we're doing actively in the city to communicate this to the county. Thank you.
Thank you. I have no additional hands raised.
Thank you. At this time then, we will close public comments. And-
Mr. Mayor, if we could do a motion for that, this is a public hearing?
Yes, do I have a motion to close public?
A second?
Have a first and a second? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Okay, it is unanimous. And we will now move into council discussion. Um, but I would like to uh, comment on Ms. Val's question. I do know that the city of Brentwood previously has written a very strongly worded letter uh, opposing uh, this kind of uh, activity and to, to the Board of Supervisors. Uh, and they did receive it. I, I spoke to our, our supervisor and she let us know that they did receive that letter. And uh, we are uh, have, have and, and are continuing to um, pay close attention to what's going on around us uh, at this time. So do we have?
Is your mic on?
Sorry, I thought I had it on. I don't think it's gonna surprise you, but um, I just wanna make a motion. So um, I'm gonna read it and if anyone wants to say anything, I mean, I don't think it's a surprise to anyone here.
Before, before you make a motion, if we could have-
Yeah, sure.
So I just wanted to say, um, I echo the comments of many of the people who spoke tonight. Um, I thank our youth. That was the most phenomenal presentation during public comment about your opinions and your um, understandings and your research. And I wholeheartedly thank our youth who, this is why we sit and do what we do. And um, just thank you. Thank you, thank you.
Having not been a part of this discussion last year and not having seen the, the youth gather and organize as strongly as they have for this one topic, it's amazing. Uh, I attend your, attended your, your meeting with the intention of trying to find out more about you and I found out more tonight about the youth of Brentwood than I ever could have at any meeting. We, we truly appreciate your outreach and your, your uh, desire to make this happen and letting us all know what you want the future of Brentwood to look like. Thank you.
Any, any further comments? Uh, I, I also do want to thank our, our youth for uh, their, their vocalizing their concerns and the research that was done. You know, I, I, I was raised in the Midwest in Oklahoma, um, right next to a, a, a field that had been used, stripped and abandoned uh, by the industry. Uh, and it, it can have some devastating and long-lasting, uh, even permanent effects on, on water tables and environments, uh, the nature involved with it around. Uh, there's a reason they call some of these abandoned areas brown field, uh, because nothing can ever grow there again. Uh, so there are a lot of different circumstances and a lot of different ways that this, this can be done. Uh, but the concern for the future, uh, it, it's, you know, you, you look around and what's going on in, in the world in different places and you start worrying about the future, then you hear uh, our young people speak and you go, you know what, we're in pretty good hands. So, thank you. Um, that's all. Thank you.
Yeah, and you have no idea. I mean, if you think tonight was great, you've missed, I mean, I think we've been working on this since twenty twenty. And what they've done in the three years is amazing. They're more organized than many adults. And the kids that have come back from college and continue to speak, it's, it's just, it's, it's amazing and it makes me so proud of all of you watching you grow up, but um-
And the march.
Yeah, the march was amazing. Um, as detailed in the staff report, I proudly move to adopt an urgency ordinance extending a moratorium on new oil and gas development in the city for an additional period of one year and a modification to C three on page three eighty-two to change where it cites ten months and fifteen days to one year.
I'll second.
Can we do have a first and a second? Margaret?
An ordinance, an urgency ordinance of the city council of the city of Brentwood extending for an additional period of one year a moratorium on new oil and gas development in the city of Brentwood pending a study of health and safety effects of such activities and the city's long-term plan for regulation.
Okay, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? This next item is a performance report from the Brentwood Police Department. Uh, Chief of Police, uh, Chief Herbert.
There we go. Well, the way I see it, if we get out of here too early, you'll all be disappointed. So I figured I was gonna try and finish this in ten minutes, but I think I got about forty-five, so. Let's move the mic a little bit closer. I feel like it's like right here, but, okay, let's get started. So, good evening, Mayor, Council. I'm here to present to you the twenty twenty-two performance report for the police department. So let's get started. So the, give you a quick overview of the police department. We currently have seventy-two sworn officers on the department. And these officers make up our patrol division, detectives, K-nine officers, motorcycle officers, school resource officers, community engagement officers. And there's two collateral assignments I think are important to recognize, which is the SWAT team, crisis negotiation team and our drone team. Our department is also made up of a civilian staff or professional staff, which includes our community engagement officers, our records division, dispatch, administration, property and evidence and part-time police assistants. So the purpose of this report is to hold ourselves accountable, be transparent to our community and to also assess staffing needs. The performance categories are response times, incidents of crime and crime rate and our workload. So when we talk about response times, we talk about response to priority one calls and priority two calls. Priority one calls are calls that I would designate as a high priority or a threat to life or an in-progress felony crime, which typically you would see officers responding to with lights and siren. Priority two calls are calls that are maybe a crime in progress, but don't necessarily rise to the level of an emergency with lights and siren, but the officers drive to the call as quickly as possible following all traffic laws. So having said that, our response times for priority one calls, from the time the officer was dispatched to the time the officer arrived on scene for the difference between twenty-one and twenty-two is three seconds. And the difference for priority two calls was about twenty-eight seconds. When we talk about response times, we also look at the amount of time it takes a dispatcher to answer the phone and then dispatch the call. As you can see here, we've had significant improvements over the year since twenty seventeen. And as you can see for twenty twenty-two, that's forty-one seconds for priority one calls and five minutes and fifty-nine seconds for priority two calls. When you put that in perspective, when you have a citizen calling for a priority one call, usually their life is not going very well at that particular moment. A lot of times they're screaming and yelling and our dispatchers do a phenomenal job of assessing that they're calling for Brentwood, where they're calling from, what they need, and then turning around and getting an officer en route to that call within forty-one seconds, which is pretty phenomenal. So when we talk about crime and crime rates, we talk about part-one crimes, which include simple assaults and that'll be important later for the calendar year and our crime rate, which is crime one part per thousand. So under the FBI Uniform Crime Reporting under UCR, these are the crimes that are, we're required to report to the FBI annually, which is murder, rape, robbery, arson, assault, burglary, theft and auto theft. I will take a moment to say that next year, these numbers will be significantly different because we've changed from UCR reporting to NiBRS or what they call cyber's reporting for California. So we're gonna go from these eight categories to thirty-eight categories and we're gonna be moving from a hierarchy, which is if you have a murder and other multiple crimes, only the murder gets currently reported. Next, starting this year, the murder and then anything else, crime that occurs also gets reported. So this report will look significantly different next year. So we talk about assault. Aggravated assault is when someone is hurt, for lack of a better term, assault with a deadly weapon and there's bodily harm. A simple assault could be two people fighting at a bar. Although we call it a simple assault, it's still an assault and still falls under our violent crime rate and we have to track that as a violent crime, even if it's simply a punch to the face. The person receiving the punch would, would view that as violent. Someone watching it may not view that as a violent act. So having said that, our violent crime rate from twenty-one to twenty-two has gone up ten percent, ten point five seven to be precise. Um, the important part is, when we talk about is the simple assaults. As you can see, it went up by sixty-two, which is the main reason for the increase in this. If, if we were to actually take the simple assaults out of this, we would only be off by less than one percent increase in um, violent crime. We talk about property crime. We've had a decrease in property crime of seven point one five percent from twenty-one to twenty-two. Significant decrease in thefts. Um, can't account for why. It's just, either it's businesses that are being victims of thefts aren't calling or citizens or that are victims of thefts from twenty-one and to twenty-two just to feel that nothing can be done or nothing's gonna be done, even if the person is arrested, so they're not calling. It's too hard to understand exactly why people may or may not call or why the thefts are down. We talk about clearance rates. As you can see with these clearance rates, uh, we have the actual and cleared. I, the only thing I can compare these two is we are comparable from twenty twenty-two UCR reporting in the um, with the FBI. They're not tracking UCR anymore. They're tracking NiBRS and they're not tracking agencies of less than a hundred staff because NiBRS got converted about two years ago. And so they're trying, FBI is trying to get caught up with where they need to be. So hopefully by next year, we'll have some better right, understanding of clearance rates. But compared to twenty twenty, these clearance rates are comparable to nationwide clearance rates. For part one crimes, we're down almost two percent for the year, which was the list of rape, robbery and so forth. And we're holding steady at our ten-year average. So as you can see over the last ten years, crime within the city has stayed pretty much the same. Let's talk about officer workload. We're gonna talk about reactive workload and proactive workload. Reactive workload is someone will call dispatch, request an officer. Um, and proactive workload is where the officers are out there actively conducting traffic stops um, or citizen encounters that are officer-initiated. So our reactive workload has decreased by four point seven five percent. And the predominantly, that area is the, the calls for service are down by twelve hundred calls for service, which impacts the reactive workload. Talk about proactive workload. Proactive workload is up one point seven one percent. And the officers, I can tell you, since the beginning of the year have been much more active. I've been following them uh, secretly, don't tell them. Um, and workload is actually going up. Traffic stops have increased. Uh, citations are increasing, so this number will also be different next year. Let's talk about the white elephant in the room, fifth beat. So we have seventy-two sworn positions. Fifty of those positions are assigned to patrol. Eight of those are sergeants. Forty-two of those are officer positions. I have six vacant positions currently and I have five officers out on long-term injury, which means I have eleven positions that cannot fill patrol. Currently with our beat system, we assign one officer per beat with one supervisor shift. For the sixth, for the fifth beat to be fully implemented, I need a minimum of six officers and one sergeant. And the reason for that is, is because, whoops, went a little too fast, hold on. The reason for that is, is that at any given time throughout the year, I can say every day of the year, we're down at least three officers. It's more like four officers that are currently working, whether it be a vacation, training, maternity, paternity leave, sick leave, any of that reason, I'm down those officers. Plus I have to change my officer minimums to have an officer per beat in order to make the fifth beat effective. It doesn't do any good to go to the fifth beat and have a four officer minimum and then have two officers sharing the fifth beat. It actually makes it more cumbersome and harder to track who's gonna respond to which calls. So I need those extra officers to get on board um, and hired. So in uh, December, we've always at, we've always wondered how are we going to track how well we're doing in the community? So in uh, December, we, we launched a software through Spider Tech called Engage, very similar to uh, some of the larger corporations out there. You uh, call nine-one-one, they'll, you get a text message back if you're calling from a cell phone saying, hey, we received your call. This is the incident number. If something changes before the officer gets there, please call back and reference this incident number. Once the call's closed out, they get a survey via text message. They answer the survey. Um, and then later, if they are a victim, they'll get a victim survey. So since December first through March fifteenth, we've had twenty-three percent, twenty-three point six percent overall response to those surveys, which is really well. And, and as you can see by this slide, ninety-two percent of the respondents are extremely satisfied. I'd say extremely, it just says satisfied, but I'm kind of partial, just, just a tad, right? So, so they're satisfied with the professionalism of our dispatchers and the officers that they're dealing with. And ninety-one percent of the respondents were satisfied with the response to their call, even if their call did not result in an arrest or it resulted in the way that they uh, they felt it should have gone. Uh, and we have an eighty-nine percent satisfaction rate with the overall experience with the Brentwood Police Department, which is pretty good. So in summary, our response times- our response times, I feel, are within the average, the state, and in fact, in some cases, better. Our crime rate is on par with our 10-year average. As with any citizen, we'd like our crime rate to be zero. But we know that's kind of like unicorns, we always chase them, but they're never out there. I would say that I had a colleague of mine say that, how do you know how safe your city is? And the answer was, if your citizens feel safe enough to leave their homes, but just scared enough to lock their doors, you're doing something right. And I think our citizens are more than willing to leave their homes, and they are smart enough to lock their doors. So I think we're doing well. The reactive and proactive workload all just depends on staffing, numbers of officers working, depending on the calls for service, and then what's going on in the environment. I have seen the pendulum swinging in our favor, and officers are, we've all been coming out of this backside of COVID and getting back to work, and the officers have been doing a phenomenal job increasing that. So I would like to say, in closing, I wanted to take some notes on this, just to make sure I got it right. So I do want to say, I want to thank the mayor and council for all of your guys' support over the last year and since I've been an officer here for the last 21 years. We've always had great support from council, and I also want to thank staff for their support because safety is not just the police department's issue, it's a city-wide issue, no matter what, right? So I do want to thank the men and women of the Brentwood Police Department for all their hard work and dedication over the last year. They've all been very willing to step up and do what needs to be done for the greater good of the community. And a lot of our officers live in this community and want to have just as safe a community as anybody else does. And they do a phenomenal job at that, along with my professional staff that may not be seen on the front lines, but are a part of the department. They do an awesome job on the backend, making our department look phenomenal with the DA's office and any other outside agencies we collaborate with. That concludes my presentation. I can take any questions if you have any.
Any questions of the chief?
I have a couple of questions. First of all, thank you for all you do. You guys do an amazing job. I've said that forever, even before I was up here. The simple assaults that went up, is there a geographic correlation at all with the simple assaults, or is it just across the city?
I didn't run a heat map just on those, and I'm not sure if I can in the system. We do have mapping systems within our sunridge records management system where we can get heat maps for where crimes are occurring, but I'm not 100% sure if we can narrow it down to just one type of crime.
Yeah, because one of our, not our neighboring cities, but another city in Contra Costa, they're noticing certain areas are, they're adding more liquor licenses, and with that, they're seeing it. So I just didn't know if there was a correlation here in Brentwood with anything that we're doing as a council would be nice to know, like businesses that we're approving or anything like that, that would be helpful.
Okay.
One of the concerns that I had is the clearance rates. As a female, it concerns, usually you think like, in a town like this, if there's a rape, they probably know the person or not, and it's a very low clearance rate, if I'm not mistaken.
Yes.
So are these rapes that people don't know the person?
So a stranger rape is extremely rare, knock on wood.
That's what I was thinking. That's why I was surprised to see that.
Yeah, and there's, rape is a very complicated and sensitive issue as it relates to clearance. A lot of it hinges on the victim. In some cases, we have victims come forward. They may know who their person is that did this to them, and they're not willing to cooperate for a variety of reasons. And it's a very personal issue. So in those cases, we may not have an identified suspect because they haven't told us who it is, although they know who it is. And some of these come through as CFS referrals, and then we'll have to contact the people in the referral, and sometimes they're just not willing to come forward with all the information that's needed.
Okay, I just want to clarify that, like, we don't have, like, unidentified, the people know who they are?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
And then just another kudos on your, the rate, the 10%, 10. something, your 10-year average. That's, and I don't think people realize how phenomenal that is, given that you still, our population has increased so much, and your staff has stayed pretty flat. To remain at a 10% is crazy good. And I think our residents should know that because it's amazing what you guys do with your staff, and I've said that over and over again. I can't wait till you hire up your fifth beat, so thank you.
I appreciate that. And I will say, Bo, that Councilmember Orleans and mayor brought up that we did swear in a Ms. Quez today. That's 51 years of Ms. Quez's working for the Brentwood Police Department. And if he finishes his tenure of 35 years, he's a young 22-year-old. He can't retire till he's 57 with the new retirement system. So if he completes, that'll be 86 years of Ms. Quez's at the police department. And we can all hold out hope that he has a child that is old enough before he retires to become another Ms. Quez, and we'll just keep this rolling, right? And yes, today was an extremely proud day. It's always great when we have new people coming in, especially that have not been a member of law enforcement, because it's increasing the ranks nationwide of all law enforcement, not only our department. And it is very heartwarming to still have people out in the community that want to be police officers in this day and age. It's phenomenal.
Vice Mayor.
Can you clarify, as you're bringing new officers in, but we can't quite build the fifth beat based on how those numbers work? What do they do in the meantime? How are they assigned?
So I can tell you, I'll give you some numbers. They're kind of staggering, and I don't want to make your head spin. But we had a recent entry-level recruitment. We had 92 applicants. 71 of them took the written test. 61 of them passed. 59 were interviewed. 12 passed the interview. Five are currently in backgrounds, and the other seven are pending polygraphs. Of those 12, assuming the other seven pass their polygraphs, pass their backgrounds, we end up with 12. Most likely, we'll end up with five, maybe. Those five will be sent off to a police academy. Brought on, if the academy is four or five months out, we bring them on. We get them oriented, we run them through some of the stuff they're going to be doing at the academy, the range, driving, D-TAC, physical fitness. And then when the academy starts, they roll in there for the 28-week academy and then come back out. So kind of depends on if we hire them. We try to get them hired before July. If we get them hired before July, they'll start the academy in July. If I hire them in August, they gotta wait till the next academy in January. So it just delays it.
That's a lot. The impact of the population, how do you feel like that has, I mean, Councilmember Mendoza mentioned it briefly, but can you talk a little bit about what you think the population growth has, how it's impacted the crime rates? If you think it has?
I don't know that it has, since as you see that 10-year average staying stagnant. That leads me to believe we are doing our job very well, right? Because we did go, over the last 10 years, we've increased, I couldn't even guess, 10, 20, or 15,000 citizens in that timeframe. So when you add all of that traffic, all of those families from all different areas, all different walks of life, and our crime rate stays consistent, has a lot to say about the people we're hiring and the city that we live in.
Do other departments have as strict a screening process, do you think? Is that a standard?
Yes and no. There's been talk of other larger agencies that are hurting really bad as lowering, starting to lower their hiring standards, hiring people with minor convictions of marijuana or under the influence of marijuana cases. So for us, that's just not the case. What we see happen is, is the lower you take the standard, the higher propensity there is for officers to make mistakes. And that could be catastrophic.
Thank you. My last question was around the move from UCR to Nibers?
Nibers.
Nibers. What was the justification for that?
So the feds wanted to move away from just reporting of those eight top crimes, and they wanted more specific data. So they're collecting more data points related to crimes, who the victim is, who the suspect is, the weapons used, time of day, weather. I mean, they're, it's a deep dive. In fact, my officers are pulling their hair out because it's, a lot of it falls back on them to do where records can't make these, fix anything that comes up as an error code for, the officers are required to do it. So it's, they are envisioning it as a more detailed look at crime, why crime is occurring, where crime is occurring, to help try to forecast through predictive policing.
Okay. And then just to comment, the survey results were fantastic. I was really proud and happy and grateful to see that. And thank you to all of your team and your officers and your administrative staff. I think we have a lot to be proud of in our city. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have one question, but I want to thank you for your report and all the hard work. Your adjective for the Engage software was spot-on. It is awesome. It is excellent. But my one question was, I didn't see in here, I think you had discussed this when I did my tour. I want to make it in a public forum because I want people to apply. How many dispatcher seats are not, are in need to be filled?
So right now, I have two vacancies, and I have one in background. That one was a little more, that recruitment was a little more not as good. We ended up with 92, let me see, it was 92 dispatchers applications or 99 applications? And that was whittled down to 26 minimum qualifications. 15 were scheduled for a written exam. Only four passed the written exam.
Wow.
And I have, they're interviewing the four this past week. I haven't gotten results of that, but I do have one lateral dispatcher that's come in the background process right now, and it looks very promising.
That's awesome, and thank you again too for your not trying to take laterals, but trying to really be selective and get new people into the force, getting local people to be on the force. I think that goes a long way, so I just want to say thank you. And thank you for the commitment here with the city and the department to equity, diversity, diversity and inclusion. I know you've done a lot of work, you and your staff, and I just want to publicly recognize you and thank you for that.
Thank you. I will say that Sergeant Aguirre, I'd be remiss if I don't mention him. He's our professional standard sergeant, and he is working constantly. He gets a name, and he is on them. He's calling them, how you doing? He's really getting that introduction and getting them to really want to work here if they don't. And with those laterals, if we can get, if we can kill their commute, or when we have applicants and new recruits like Jordan Msquez, that just we swore in today, he went to Heritage High School. He lives local. He's not going to all of a sudden one day go, oh, I'm going to do an hour and a half commute and go to work for San Francisco for a little bit more money. It's just not going to happen, so we keep them local. Hey, no pun intended.
Okay. Now I have a couple of questions.
I'm sorry, I'm out of time.
I do have a couple of questions. Out of, when you mentioned the amount of applicants for the positions that you're trying to fill now, five years ago, what would that number have been and how many applicants would we have been receiving five years ago? And how many of those would now be in that process? If you can.
Well, based on, just based on the climate we're in right now, we would be having a less of a problem. I don't have exact numbers, but it would be, it was much easier five years ago to hire especially entry-level officers. We had more people interested in becoming police officers and wanting to be in this profession. So that has hurt us. And laterals, laterals are a finicky bunch. If we can get them to understand the work-life balance, and we have more to offer than the current agency they're working for, then they're going to come here.
You mentioned during your presentation about the amount of officers that are off on work-related injuries. How many is that?
Five.
And out of the five, how many can we anticipate probably aren't going to come back? Or can we do that?
I can definitively tell you one, because he has said, he was supposed to retire and then ended up with an injury, and so he has said, once he is cleared, he will be done.
And under the current policy and under the way we currently hire, you can't fill that spot until it's vacated, correct?
Correct.
But if we somehow found a way to make that work of being able to fill a position, would that help with the staffing?
If I were at top step, I mean, if I were full, yes. But there is, I believe there's a provision, and See Mantra Ogden can correct me, but if I have a definitive person that is going to be retiring, and they've submitted their paperwork and say, I'm gone here, then I can be authorized to hire past that person, past my number, without council approval. So that I can do, but I can't forecast. Like, we used to have the four over-hires positions, which were converted to just positions. That doesn't exist anymore. And again, we have to be fully staffed before we can even focus on where we're going to go from here. That's, that's the key, key point, is getting there.
Okay, thanks.
Well, Chief, I want to thank you for a great presentation, and it can be great because of the great work that you and all of our officers are doing. I know that over the years that we have had a significant amount of our officers that live here in town, and I understand that we still have that situation. There's a good amount of officers that live here. I do want you to let us know, and I know council has voted this way in the past, if there are burgeoning technologies that are going to make the change over to this overwhelming need for much more detailed reporting. If there's software, hardware, anything like that, please let us know. We want our officers to be able to, as quickly as possible, get away from the report and back on the street. And if there's technology that will help that, please let us know. You would be the one to know.
Yes, I would, and I would be right in front of you asking. And I will be back asking for some more money for that particular software. Probably in a couple of weeks. Not the foreshadow anything for you.
Well, thank you, thank you very much for that. If there's no further questions of the chief, this time we will open public comments.
If you're in person, please file a speaker card on the form provided at the back of the chambers. And if you're participating via Zoom, please raise your hand. Remarks are limited to three minutes per person, and the microphone will be muted after the timer has expired. And I received no comments on this prior to the meeting. I do have one speaker card, Ian Cohen.
I know, I know you are, like, come on, Ian, just sit down for one. I just want to say, Chief, I'm not out for speak for the youth commission, but as chair of the youth commission, you're killing it. You're not coming in murder. You're doing a good job, okay? I want to clarify, you're not doing murder, but like, I saw, like, I heard the loud noise, and you ran out there with your radio. I thought that was your gun for a moment, because I was like, oh, God, no. I know there's a stigma behind police, but you're, you're, in Brentwood, there's no stigma. We love our cops. And again, I cannot speak for the youth commission, but as the chairperson, I think the commissioner loves our police department. I hope they do. If they don't, I'm going to have a talk with them. Don't point me on the record. Oh, well, I am on the record. But not talking as a commissioner. I have called your police department how many times? Mostly non-emergencies, thank God. Like, I literally called over flooding. One time I called over a downtree. The downtree, CSL was there in like 10 minutes. I was talking with the owner, and I was like, oh, why did I waste CSL time? Counsel, you need to support him more. Give him more money. Come on. What's my taxes going for? Like, I called 911 at B-Fac because we had an emergency? Three of your cops were flying in in no time. And the other day, I was driving here with my dad for Parks and Recreation. Two cops, hopefully helping Amazon truck driver, not pulling him over. I think you were just helping him. I hope they were. But again, you can call 911 or non-emergency, and you know, a CSL or a police officer is just going to be there instantly. Even non-emergency, if they're not busy, they'll be there in like, what, 10 minutes or so? Following traffic law, maybe California speeding, you know? Sorry, Chief, but it's California. We gotta drive how we gotta drive. But ew, it was not Brentwood PD, like, no way. And it was CHP, and they instantly transferred me to PD, and guess what? Chief, whoever the dispatcher was, instantly, they answered me and said, oh, an officer is on the way. And also your survey, I filled out a few times, non-emergency ones. I am one of those extremely satisfied persons. And I may be the only public commenter, but again, I really, really need point of record. You're amazing, Chief, and again, give him all the money. Come on. My, the $11 I just paid the state income tax for filing? Give it all to him. He deserves it. The youth commissioner loves the cops, and there was one cop, I think, the SRO for Heritage. He saw me at Cool Spot when I was working there. He saw me at Heritage, and he saw me at the pool. Oh, just community policing? He's like, Ian, you're everywhere. That's the type of cop I want. A cop that knows people for being good and not bad. Because I don't want a cop walking in and going, be like, oh, God, that's the guy I just arrested. I don't want that. I have a friend who doesn't want to work for Brentwood PD for that reason. He doesn't want to live in the Thank you.
If only Ian wasn't quite so bashful. Thank you. Thank you. No, I, I do want to encourage our community to call 911 when you see something. I, I've had several of our residents say that, you know, they, they were hesitant to call because they felt or had seen something that they weren't sure they needed to call for. Call. That, that's why our officers are here. If you are aware, you know, be aware of your surroundings, but if you see something that, that doesn't seem right, feel right, please call. It's, it's much better to have a, a situation that wasn't an emergency or something that was criminal activity. And, and an officer, officer shows up and they can clarify it and ease the neighbors' minds. But, but please do call. I, I've had more people say that they were hesitant in, in recent, very recent times than, than usual. So yes, please, please do call 911. It is awesome to have our own dispatch. And so please, please do that. At this time, we will move, yes, we have one more. I'm sorry.
Carolina Villaseca, go ahead.
Ah ha, you thought you were getting away with no public comment from Zoom, but here I am. Actually, this is a question for the chief and I do agree that Brentwood PD does a great job. And I want to congratulate the chief on his new position. And I look for great things from BPD and hopefully you get staffed up with that fifth beat soon. Crossing my fingers for you. I do have a question because I did not get a sufficient answer. And it's the situation that we spoke about on the phone. Fairview at Sand Creek, all the traffic lights were out. So that intersection has a left-hand turn, a right-hand turn and a straight-ahead turn. And as you know, between seven and eight o'clock in the morning, everybody's trying to drop the kids off at school and trying to get to work, trying to get to four. And it is one of the biggest intersections that we have in Brentwood. So after almost getting hit trying to get home, I called 911 and let them know that none of the lights were working. And if they could send somebody to direct traffic, and I was told they don't do that because it's a liability to the city. Now you and I spoke and you explained to me if the lights were flashing, but they were not flashing. And I saw the video that you posted on social media saying, people need to give way to the right, right? And I just don't see people doing that. Now I came down Grant the other day and there was a huge accident on Empire. And guess what was there? There were police guiding traffic. So people would go around the accident. Now that accident was caused by two people who did not give way. And they both crossed the intersection and one of them ended up on the sidewalk, their car. So that situation is a little different, but my point is that police were there guiding traffic. So no more accidents would occur. But police did not go to Sand Creek and Fairview to prevent an accident from happening. And I, I would like to know why we don't prevent from happening instead of prevent from more happening after an accident has occurred. Thank you.
Thank you. I have no additional hands raised.
Thank you. At this time, we will close public comments. And I will, if, if staff wants to answer now, you can. If, if it is more beneficial to contact Ms. Villaseca and offline and give her a more in-depth answer. I'll, I'll leave it up to staff to.
Yeah, it is a very long, complex answer, but I can give her a call directly.
Okay, thank you, Chief. At this time, before we go further, there's been requested by council member to take a five-minute break. If that's okay with council, we can take a five-minute recess. Okay, we're in recess for five minutes. Thanks.
Persons, sure.
Oh, so at this time, we will. We will come back into session through all my notes. It is always great that our council members ask the questions first because most of the time, all my questions are answered before I have to ask them. Let's move into. To. Item D2, which is, the item pertains to an update on the status of the cluster mailboxes in the Kindred and Balfour subdivision and future agenda item request about the coordination of mail delivery in new subdivisions in conditions of approval. And Alexis will present.
Thank you. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, City Council. If you bear with me, I will share my screen quickly. Will that work, Margaret, if I? Oh my goodness, sorry. Attack of the windows. There we go. All right, thank you. So I'm here tonight to give you a brief update on two items. One is the status of the mailboxes at Kindred and Balfour project. And the other is an update on US Postal Service requirements for mail delivery for subdivisions and how that might work going forward with our conditions of approval. So Kindred and Balfour, quickly. Staff has spoken with the developer and the postmaster several times over the past several weeks to coordinate and just see if there's any thing we can do to intervene with the mailbox and mail delivery situation. The city's role in this capacity is limited. I know that's not, you know, popular information to hear, but our role in terms of regulating the postmaster and the US Postal Service is very, very limited. If we have any power at all, it's just suggestion and coordination. So in our conversations with the developer, they are, they have been in regular contact with the postal service and the postmaster has confirmed that that is the case. And they're developing their agreement and when mail will be delivered. Right now, the developer estimates that the mailboxes will be installed and delivery can begin by the end of April. So a little over a month from now. In the meantime, residents' options are to pick up their mail at the post office or rent a P.O. box until that mail delivery service is, is started. So that's the latest information. We have Crystal DeCastro here who's had those conversations with the postmaster and the developer. If you have specific questions about that. So we have about a month to go before those mailboxes are installed and activated by the postal service. In terms of broader requirements on, for mail delivery to new residential subdivisions, the US Postal Service has requirements for developers and builders that are pretty broad and are really subject to implementation by the local postmasters. The requirements for new residential subdivisions are most typical now for cluster mailboxes. The individual mailboxes in front yards are pretty much a thing of the past. Postal Service determines the timing of mail delivery based on a number of factors, such as when site addresses are signed, when mailboxes are installed, and when a project's roads are completed, so safe access to those mailboxes can be provided. The city has no ability to place any requirements on the postal service, but the city does assign addresses to properties. And the city does weigh in on the location of mailboxes to make sure they are safe and they don't conflict with any of our above or underground utility boxes. So the city does have one current standard condition of approval for residential mailboxes that addresses the location of mailboxes, but does not address the timing of their installation. So in response to the recent issues at Kindred and Balfour, staff has drafted two additional standard conditions of approval to hopefully address timing issues for future projects, while acknowledging that the city does not have the ability to place any requirements on the postal service itself. Those proposed conditions of approval are on the screen now. The first is that a permittee shall install and provide access to mailboxes as early as possible to provide delivery service in coordination with the United States Postal Service. Mailbox locations shall be provided on the improvement plans. The second proposed condition would be permittee shall provide notice to buyers that it is possible that commencement of mail delivery will not coincide with occupancy of the unit and it may be necessary to pick up mail at the post office or rent a post office box in the interim. So those are staff's proposed conditions to hopefully avoid a situation like Kindred and Balfour in residential projects going forward. Just be more precise about the timing than we have been in the past in our conditions of approval. So that concludes my brief presentation and I would be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. Or did you have questions? Sorry, Mayor.
No.
Sorry. It's late. So there's the guide that you showed. If you want to put up, I'm sorry, slide number two real quick.
Oh, sure.
Can, the first thing is, can we share that guide with Mr. Doorman? If, if there's a link or something that we could do on that one? So he has the guides. But when it comes to the, can we override this in any way, shape or form? So, so if we say we want, you can't issue a permit of occupancy until you have a mailbox and it's till like the United States Postal Service starts to deliver, is that something we can say?
We can say that. I don't know how enforceable it would be because we don't have control over the postal service's timing. It's all up to their, their criteria and, and their needs. So for example, if we said you could not get a certificate of occupancy until the mailboxes were installed, we may be in conflict with some of our other conditions of approval and the nexus arguments that we do have control over because we are not the postal service. We're not in control. So for example, a water connection, we have control over. So putting a condition like that on a project could constrain it in an unreasonable way because we don't actually have control over that. because we don't actually have control over that. So our draft conditions of approval are addressing the timing issues that we do have involvement in, and so that would be our recommended solution.
Okay. And then my next question is, cluster mailboxes. If you live in Shadow Lakes, you might hear some people complain about their cluster mailboxes because they have to drive to it. Is that our choice? Can we say it's not cluster mailbox? Or is that the United States Postal Service that's saying it has to be a cluster mailbox?
Correct. It is the United States Postal Service requirement that it has to be a cluster mailbox and we cannot override that requirement.
Okay. And yeah, if we could get that guide to Mr. Doorman, because there might be other avenues outside of our field of, you know, field of influence that he might.
Absolutely. There's the postmaster and there's the, the title's delivery service manager or something like that that's supposed to coordinate with developers and that's all information's in this document.
Okay. Thank you.
Are there any further clarifying questions?
Mine is half question, half statement, but I, there's a, an assembly bill by Assembly Member Wood around energy utility communication, and it's a measure that aims to address situation delays with connecting projects to the grid, including housing projects. And I saw that and it made me think of this and there could be potentially legislative fix for something like this if someone were to take this on. Is that, or actually more congressional?
Certainly, there could be. You know, the P G N E issues are well-known and often talked about because they are real and they are causing significant delays for projects. I'm not as aware, as aware that postal service issues have been elevated or talked about as frequently in, in that sense, in that context, but certainly the legislature could address interagency. But again, the postal service is a federal agency.
Yeah, yeah.
And that's different than P G N E and state legislation.
So people should write their congressman or women. Okay. Thank you.
I wanted to ask if you can put the slide back up that talked about the proposed language changes? Thank you. On the, the second change, it seemed fairly straightforward. I appreciate that because buyers will be signing or being noticed prior to possible purchase that, that they're ending into a complex or into a unit, an area that doesn't have a mailbox or may not have one for quite a while. But the first language to me, is there any way that we can change it to be more stringent? And the reason why I ask is the earliest possible language kind of is specific to what the builder thinks is early as possible. In this case that we have now, I think the argument has been the clubhouse isn't built yet and so it's not early as possible. So I think we are already here and I'm wondering if we can make any modifications to the early as possible to be more stringent.
So yeah, I understand your point and your concern. It is difficult for us to be more specific because again, we are not in control of the ultimate process. So for example, if we said the mailboxes must be installed prior to the completion of the first 20 units, okay? There may be other reasons why that's not possible. The roads aren't in yet, or there's fencing, or there's construction equipment in the way and the post office will say, well, you can put it there, but I won't deliver to it yet. Right? And so we went round and round with how we can be more precise about the timing because that is the main concern. And just frankly, it's very difficult to do. But I think what we can do is, for example, if we're looking at a subdivision and the mailbox locations are at the clubhouse and the clubhouse is not supposed to be built for, till the third phase after, you know, X number of units were already built and occupied, we may be able to say, well, that's not the best location for it because that won't provide the earliest possible service. And mail, and postmaster, can we put it here instead and maybe another one in that third, in that third phase location? So that's the kind of way we could weigh in through the process. But I'm, I'm, you know, this is purely a suggestion from staff, but that's why it is probably more vague and broad than we would if we were in control and writing the condition over or something we had control over.
I thank you for that. And I, I think my follow-up question would be, I know the last sentence says mailbox locations shall be provided on the improvement plans. Is it possible to require not only the location, but a conditional timeline for placement? I know we can't put any requirements on the United Postal Service, but I think holding builders to do the work they need to do to find out from the postal service, an estimate of time on the improvement plans in advance may be helpful.
So we may be able to do that probably through a different mechanism. The improvement plans are strictly the drawings about where the utilities, the easements, all of the, all of that information, all of that stuff on the site is on a plan. It's not really a narrative or a description. We can probably get that information from developers through other mechanisms, their development application, that sort of thing.
Thank you.
Okay. There are no further clarifying questions of staff. At this time, we'll open public comments.
If you're in person, please file a speaker card with the form provided at the back of counter, on the counter at the back of the chambers. If you're participating via Zoom, please raise your hand. Remarks are limited to three minutes per person and your microphone will be muted after the timer has expired and I received no comments on this item prior to the meeting. I have no speaker cards in person. I do have two hands raised in Zoom. I'll start with Danny Doorman. Mr. Doorman, go ahead.
Yes. Oh, boy. Thank you again. I caught the tail end of this. All right. How to do this calmly and civilly. There are so many different things that can be done. As you were talking, as an example, if you have a phased development, let's say Kindred and Balfour, they project to build out 30 homes. Their plan is to put the consolidate, the consolidated mail in the clubhouse. Well, there is that little period of time where they just put down a temporary mail repository. The whole thing is that the USPS will deliver to an address as long as one, the address exists. If the address exists, then the other part of it is it has to be placed in a receptacle. So I haven't heard anything yet that says they, the developer, can't put in a temporary set of mailboxes. Or I haven't heard anyone say that, just like my neighborhood, I have, I have a stump with four mailboxes, my neighbors on either side of me and across the street. If it's going to be such a tedious process for the developer, then let's go with an exist, what has worked forever and a day, the good old singular postbox. But to give them an inch is just a blown opportunity. And, you know, I'll say again, when it comes to Kindred and Balfour, you give these guys an inch and I'll take anyone who wants to go on a ride over to that neighborhood. Introduce you to a couple of little old ladies that can't get around and they were in phase one. And it still doesn't look like, I have absolutely no faith and trust in Shea. Absolutely none. And so I would not give them a quarter. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Carolina Villaseca. Carolina, go ahead.
Hi, thank you. And maybe this is more for the planning commission, but if there are future developments that are seniors, maybe there should be a requirement about mail, considering that some of those seniors might have mobility issues and maybe get, I mean, had so many close calls pulling in and out of that post office, but maybe this is something that should be considered in our code to look at that situation so that we don't end up with the situation that Mr. Doorman's mom has, that she has to actually go to the post office to get her mail. I, I don't think that's a reasonable requirement of senior housing. So maybe this is a thought for future planning commission requirements. Thank you.
Thank you. I have one speaker card. I'll call on Ian Cohen.
I, oh, good evening, Council. Sorry, too much speaking tonight, but I understand staff's like saying we cannot be too like specific on federal government in the post office, but I hate giving lawyers work and I know lawyers hate work and we all hate lawyers sometimes, sorry, but that's how the world is. But if you guys can figure out, if we have the legal authority to say, hey, before we allow you to put someone in this house, please like make sure they can get their mail, not just to senior housing, because senior can buy a house anywhere. That's kind of ageist in my opinion, not, not frowning upon Carolina there, but I'm just saying. But mail is the most crucial backbone to our country. I don't need to repeat that, but mail built this country and Amazon needs the logistics of mail every single day. And I, my question is, is Amazon delivering? If Amazon's delivering, USPS should be delivering, but again, not our world to control. But if we can control legally the permit of occupancy or whatever, I hate legal talk, but I want to be a lawyer one day, while I continue, um, let's do that. Let's explore that avenue. I think that'll be a good avenue because developers can be sneaky and we all know that and we don't want to be bullied by anyone, like I talked during my oil talk. So let's explore that. I think what Alexis has proposed right now is a good middle ground while the lawyers explore the legality of, of furze or seeing, because I got two grandparents, they, they cannot get to the mailbox. I'm the one who grabs the mail for everyone, which reminds me when I get home and eat, check the mail. If I forget, I'll be like, uh-oh, I hope it's not stolen because I got one of those street ones and that's a big problem. So and also that post office, yeah, it's horrible to get in and out of. I have today driving in Balfour, a close call and I, I'm more close call to that post office. So we need to make sure everyone's safe and protected. Thank you.
Thank you. I have no additional speaker cards or hands raised.
Okay. At this time, we will close public comment, move into council discussion. There's no further council discussion?
I just think we need to do everything that we can and possible. But the other thing is, we already have applications in. Any changes we make to our language is for future applications, correct? Or?
Well, I think it depends on the status, if they've been deemed complete already or if they're just in and under review. So any changes, once an application is deemed complete, will not apply to them.
Okay. So some, even if you, even if you see a development happening and we put in something, it might not apply to them depending on where they were in the process?
So if we introduce new standards after they're deemed complete, it may not apply to them. It doesn't mean we can't talk to developers and encourage them. This is, bless you. This is not necessarily a controversial issue for most developers to want to have mail service to their residents in a timely manner. So it doesn't mean that we can't discuss it with them and encourage them to handle it a different way, even if the condition of approval doesn't apply to them, if that makes sense.
Yeah. Okay. That's good. And then I think, Tim, you had said you would give us an update. So if we could, you know, I think halfway through, you were going to give us an update. If we could just get that update and send it to Mr. Doorman as well. I think that we're trying. I don't think it's, I mean, I think you've probably received emails from all of us for a while now. You're trying, we're not as a city not trying. I don't think we've ever seen anything like this that I can recall. So, thank you.
I'd like to make a motion, if possible, to adopt the language proposed in the report provided by Ms. Morris.
Okay. We have a first.
A second.
Second. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. It carries unanimously. Moving into item E one, if you have a new agenda item request, at this time, please let me know if not. No new ones? Okay. Item E two.
Oh, you know what? I did. And I don't know, I don't know if this needs to come back as an agenda item, but can we figure out the three minutes versus five minute situation? Because it's on the books as five minutes. We give them three minutes. I don't care what it is, but let's just make it tick and tie so that there's no confusion from the public about what they're supposed to get. And I think that's your call as the mayor. I don't think it needs to come back to us, but something for you to think about.
If I could have our councils weigh in on that, if that's something that I have control over, then it wouldn't need to come back as a.
Well, it's certainly not something we discussed tonight, but I can talk with you offline about it, Mr. Mayor, and then if it needs to come back, I can come back.
Thank you. Okay. Item.
Sorry. I would, I would just like to request a staff presentation on the, to clarify the policies around council response to public comment. Just to get a staff presentation around the protocols around that. Do we have, as far as our ethics policy, whatever it is that guides our response or lack of to public comment, I just want us to have that out there. I think there's some, a lot of discussion about it and I just want to have an open conversation about what that looks like.
So, Dan, I believe are the ethics and policy or the other guideline has a language about that? Rules and procedures has a document, a paragraph on how that's to be handled. So I can definitely share a copy with the council on that.
I think it, I think we should probably have a staff presentation publicly so that people are aware that we're doing that because there seems to be a lot of question around it. Thank you.
We can come back with that on a future agenda item.
Okay. Thank you.
Item E two point one. Councilmember Mendoza would like to explain your request related to establishing protocols, procedures concerning, considering certain events at city park and adjacent streets and recouping all costs incurred by the city.
Yeah. This has come up after a couple of years of discussion with staff, with residents, with downtown businesses. Our park has really, really taken a toll and it's costing us a lot of money to fix the grass, to keep it up to date. And also we've gotten feedback that the park is not available to residents when they want it because it gets shut down for events. And I'm not saying we shut down events, but I think we need to start limiting the events downtown and moving some. We have some other fantastic parks. So let's start rotating events around is what I want to do. And then we need to figure out, you know, people's like, I want to come to the park, but it's dirt, right? Because everyone walks on it and it takes a toll and it's become dirt. Then they seed it and then it comes, it costs a lot of money. They come out and seed it, the grass comes back and then we have more events. So it's just, can we move them to the streets? Can, to the street? Can we move them to other parks? I know the Rotary thanked them so much because they're, you know, they moved their date on an event, but when, we had actually talked about them moving to Veterans Park because it's a big park that can be used for events and it also would help other areas get more business. There's a whole shopping center across from that, but we, we need to just start moving them around. And I think someone said, you know, the application says we're supposed to have quality events and someone said that some of the events we're having downtown are more like flea markets. And I think we need to be careful of what we're doing. And I did talk to Bruce about it and he said, most cities do have guidelines on the frequency and making sure that they're paying their fair share for the impact on the park. So I think we need to look at it too as a city. They can benchmark what other cities are doing and go from there.
Thank you. At this time, we will open public comments. Margaret?
If you're in person, please file a speaker card on the form provided at the counter at the back of the chambers. If you're participating via Zoom, please raise your hand. Remarks are limited to three minutes per person and your microphone will be muted after the timer has expired and I received no comments on this item prior to the meeting. And I have no speaker cards in person and there's two hands raised in Zoom. I'll call on Amy Tilly. Amy, go ahead.
Hello, everyone. So I, I did want to stay on to address this topic. It's something that from a downtown standpoint, it is important. And we talked, we talked with staff about this, you know, a handful of times last year. It kind of came up. Nothing, you know, too precarious or anything was going on at that time, but what we've kind of seen is influx in certain events that are more like, maybe not community-worthy events, maybe perhaps they're not really focused on the community so much as they're more like, just like money-making events that don't benefit like local nonprofits or, or the community overall. And so from, from our standpoint where we're sitting, it's like, you know, city park is a, it's an amenity. And so, um, from, from our standpoint where we're sitting, it's like, you know, City Park is a, it's an amenity. It's, it's a park first and foremost. We love it as a place to host, um, you know, lots of great events for, you know, local nonprofits and multicultural events. We think that's like the, the great use of that, that space. But so we just asked that there be some more decisive, um, I guess, um, approvals or, um, just requirements in terms of, of the use of, of that space. And we know that, that other cities do have things, so it would just be kind of falling in line with what if some of the standard operating procedures are for other nearby cities and kind of their use of the parks. We do agree, you know, we want to see Brentwood flourish all over town. And so there are certain parks and different things that would be possibly better suited for certain other types of events. So, um, we just, we appreciate that this item was brought forward because it's, it's something that we've talked about. And, um, you know, we want to make sure we're always having really high quality events, uh, in downtown and that they represent the city. You know, the way that it should be as a high quality city and, um, you know, that we're only closing down the streets and the park when, you know, it really makes sense to do that. So, um, that's all. But thank you guys. Thanks for, um, talking about this item.
Thank you. The next speaker is Carolina Villaseca. Carolina, go ahead.
Hi, um, yeah, about this item, I think this is really important because the focus always seems to be downtown. And everything goes downtown, but we have a huge city and we have parks all over the, the, the city. And Veterans Park is tremendously underused. And I think it, the people who live by the library and who live in that little area around, um, City Park, behind the library, next to the library and over, um, I don't remember the street names, but those people get so frustrated because people are always parking illegally. And it's, they, they are very, very frustrated. They have, they have to come out and yell at people to move their cars when there is an event downtown. So I say, spread the love, spread the love, let's annoy all the neighbors around downtown by spreading the events around downtown. Uh, from downtown to other parks. And as council member Mendoza said, there are other businesses that have commented to me when talking, just talking about their business, that they would love to see some of the overflow from these events to their businesses around town. And not just focus everything downtown. Uh, we, we really should spread the annoyance and the love and the money, um, all over the city. It's only fair. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Pete J. Pete, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor Bryant. Uh, council members, I just wanted to, uh, touch on what Amy Tilly with the Downtown Brentwood Coalition, uh, spoke about earlier. And the importance of processes for certain, um, applications and events that do go on downtown. Speaking as or for the Downtown Brentwood Coalition, all the events we've put on for, for several years, there's a lot of responsibility that comes with that. Can you hear me? I'm sorry.
We can hear you. Sorry. Go ahead.
Somebody's phone went off.
Yes, um, anyways, uh, there is a lot of responsibility and, um, that, that, that comes with putting on events downtown with just not so, so much of, of being a successful event for the community, but being responsible and clean up trash. And we, we kind of witnessed that during COVID, um, with some events that just were randomly put on, uh, without these policies in place. So, um, really glad to see that this is being addressed and look forward to the next, uh, council. Thank you.
Thank you. I have no additional hands raised and no speaker cards.
And at this time, we will close public comments, move into council discussion on this item.
You know, I, one, I told Tim the other day, I said, you know, we have a great staff that are the subject matter experts the other day and let's have them speak. And I was actually going to have Bruce speak, but he's not here. Or is he?
Bruce is, uh, participating via Zoom, so he is prepared to weigh in with some ideas.
Yeah, so Bruce, you and I had talked about that. This was, you know, this is something you all, I think, were, um, had talked about. And, um, so I don't know if you have any perspective, um, on it, what we can do to maintain the park better? Or what we can do to spread out events or, you know, do you think it's worth it to go and benchmark what other cities are doing?
Yes, good evening, Mayor and council members. Um, yes, I absolutely, um, agree with this, uh, agenda item. We absolutely want to be good neighbors with the downtown and with our downtown residents. And the idea with our community events and the venue of City Park, um, is that the kinds of events provide synergy and complement our downtown and provide, um, the type of vision that, um, we have here in Brentwood. So, um, I, we've, we've had a great special event application process that's been in place now for several years. So I think it's a good opportunity to refresh that, um, and take a look at some of these things that are being brought up. And, uh, it'd be nice, what we'd like to do is to hear from our council to help us, uh, determine what this vision is. Look at the amount of events, the kinds of events, um, because the park is getting, uh, it's a very popular park. And I think, um, the event process has been very successful, but it's now time to kind of take another look at it. So, um, I agree with what has been said and, uh, look forward to bringing this item back after we've had some, um, time to kind of review it, uh, with staff as well.
What I was looking for is just kind of a rubric, uh, you know, we can look at other cities and how they're coming up with it, like what's a quality event? Because quality is so subjective, right? So let's get a little bit more specific about what quality is. The other thing is on frequency, we know that having events every single weekend on that park is really taking a toll. And it's, um, it's an impact on use by our residents, but it's also an impact financially. You and I have talked about the different parks and reseating them all and what it takes to do that. So if we could talk about frequency also, um, is there a perfect frequency where your park and rec team could say, okay, this is, this is how much recovery time the park needs, um, after an event and that type of thing. But yeah, if you could come up with, you know, come back with suggestions on, um, the type of events. Again, I'm hearing a lot about things are turning into a flea market. People are having car shows without permits, like all of that kind of stuff. If we could hone in on that kind of, just what we're hearing from the downtown residents, then I don't know if we need, I mean, businesses and residents, if we need a survey from them or anything along those lines.
Yeah, absolutely. And we, we want to work with our downtown business partners as well. We have to create a balance between, um, having events, um, but also making sure that the downtown is open for business as well. So trying to work through what that balance looks like. So, um, I agree.
I think I was, I was just going to tag on what you're saying, Bruce, is, is that we've also heard from a lot of our downtown businesses that some of these events are actually harming them and taking away some of their revenue that they would typically receive on a day where they, a lot of people can't get into their door. So, um, I would love it if we could include a, some feedback from downtown businesses about what would work for them when it comes to, um, economic development. So that's part of the criteria for judging some of these, uh, events.
Yes, I agree. And we'll work with our downtown business partners to get some feedback on that as well.
I had a question about the recoupment of costs and specifically, um, are we taking major loss when we have overtime of staff or police? And, um, what are we doing? What's our policy on, and maybe this can come back in the future, but our policy on recouping costs? I know that we, we have lost money, to my understanding, on certain events. Wondering what do we do to try to recover it?
Yeah, we have certain fees in place which we, um, which we charge for events. But I think that cost recovery, um, and fee structure is something that we would also want to bring back and see if there's additional cost recovery that we, uh, need to take a look at as well.
In addition to the cost recovery parts that, uh, council member Mendoza, uh, I'm sorry, Pearson brought up. Some of the events in the downtown, shutting down the main roads and limiting access to, uh, the streets and for fire or, uh, medical personnel to get in. I think in other cities I've worked in, requirements of if the streets are going to be shut down, having, uh, an ambulance unit staged at the facility or at the site to render aid should it be needed. We should probably start looking into that. The larger these events are getting, the more difficult it is for fire and paramedics to get in. And then to piggyback on top of it again, the reimbursement of overtime funds to our police department. It comes out of their general overtime budget. And Chief Herbert's expected to continue to run the police department and we're taxing his overtime budget with major events, not only downtown, but whether we move these events to, uh, other parks or other parts of town. We have to start getting reimbursed or the city needs to start getting reimbursed for the money we're spending, uh, to host these events.
Yes, and we do have a, um, special event team that's made up of public safety, public works, our streets division, solid waste, parks and recreation. So we do, um, spend time evaluating the events and we get feedback from all of our different areas. When we put conditions of approval on events, um, but we will need to take a look at the cost recovery and the impact of events to, um, especially public safety is extremely important, um, to make sure that we are following and have the proper protocols and procedures in place.
Thank you, Bruce. If there's no further discussion, do I have a motion on this item?
Make a motion, um, to have staff spend time and resources on this item.
A second.
Okay, well, first and a second, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Moving, and thank you, Bruce. Item E2 point two, uh, the future agenda item request from council member Pearson for city council discussion of and possible direction to staff related to the possible creation of events to be held in conjunction with certain proclamations. And, uh, council member Pearson?
Thank you. I think this was bidding to come after E1, E2 comes. Uh, my goal is not to, in, in making this request, was not to say, let's start throwing a bunch of parties in our city. My goal was to figure out if we can get, um, some more direction from our staff about how we can align events that we have in our city with all of the goals that we have in our proclamations that we've made. For example, tonight, we've made proclamations for, um, Down Syndrome Day and recognition, recognition of autism awareness. And it would be phenomenal if we even had small and, um, a recognition of all abilities weeks, just like our school districts do. Um, where we can make, even if it's just on our website, announcements about events that are going on in the city. Or if there are events that we can co-host or support. I'd love to find out how we can do more of those opportunities, um, those activities. As well as I really appreciate the comment about quality, quality events. And I am very considerate of the fact of the bandwidth of our Parks and Rec Department, um, that they have a lot that they do. They do it with excellence. Um, I'm also, um, understanding of the bandwidth of our police department, that they do it with excellence and they show up to many of our events. But I think in us looking at E1 and trying to weed out, looking for quality, I think if the city had its hand on some of our events to make decisions or if we were planning those events, I think we can kind of weed out and, and present the quality that we, we would like. That's more in align with our goals. Um, and so I, I just would really like a, um, a presentation by staff or direct staff to look at the type of budgets we have to increase. I think right now, in one of the presentations by Parks and Rec, I think we put on, I think, is it three or four, um, of the major events here? I appreciate all of the organizations specifically, and I, I like our alignment, um, when we support, um, people like the Chamber, the Rotary, the Lions Club and all those organizations who do provide quality events for our city. Like Hometown Halloween, our Christmas events and, and many other, um, the holiday events that we have. But I'd like to see from our perspective as a city, what our Parks and Rec Department can show us as far as budget to provide a few more, um, opportunities. Even for example, we had a presentation by, um, I don't want to butcher her name, but Kim Gulliano from, from the Friends of, um, of Brentwood Library, the literary stroll, if we can connect that with something that we're doing here to show our support, I think it would be great. And I'd like to figure out how we can do that, that doesn't put an additional amount of work on Parks and Rec specifically on, uh, Mr. Mulder and his staff and also on our, our police department and our chief in being accessible with now being reported that we don't have our staff fully fit. Um, but see how we can do that and expand it.
Thank you. At this time, we will open public comments.
If you're in person, please file a speaker card. If you're participating via Zoom, please raise your hand. Remarks are limited to three minutes per person and your microphone will be muted after the timer has expired. And I received no comments, um, on this item prior to the meeting. And I have no speaker cards and no hands raised.
Okay, at this time, we will close public comments, move into council discussion.
Um, did, I, I, you know, we already, I, I'm not sure if, I'm confused a little bit because we already give money to the library stroll, we give a grant there, we give a grant to, so we're already partnering a lot on these events? Is there any events that you think we're missing? In partnering with them?
Yeah, I think there are a couple, there are a lot of events that we're missing. I know that there are people who come and do events. Like I think that, um, and we do give funds, but there are some organizations that we don't give. And I think that if we can do more of our events, example, I know we had a Juneteenth event here. I know that there's a Juneteenth event that's going to be happening at the fairgrounds that's being put on by someone. But I'd like to see our city try to figure out how we can, um, do something from our perspective specifically. I think there are other events, like we make a lot of proclamations. And I would like for us to not only say it in our, our proclamations, but to support it with like evidence base that we're actually doing activities. Like what do we do to support all abilities? What are we doing in our community? So those are the type of activities that I'm seeking out. And we provided a whole bunch of proclamations, but I like to connect it to type of activities that we're probably already doing or that we haven't done.
I don't know if Bruce can get back on, but, um, Bruce, do you have a list of all of the events that we have? Because I think we have a lot of them that kind of cover a lot that we talk about. And maybe we should go through and see what we think we're missing and where we can add value. And do we think that should be part of the grant process? Because I, I, it all goes back to money, right? Like right now, we don't have any more money. So I'm trying to think of how do we get money? Because I think this, if we do it the way she's saying, I think we'd have to come back with the next budget, right? Because it's an additional budget request versus if we tie it in with the grants that we have right now and reach out to organizations and say, hey, it's grant time. If you'd like to have events, we need you to get your application in before a certain time, because I think it's $170,000 that we have. But it has to be tied to the grant. So I'm just trying to figure out, how do we get money when we are flat on budget? And I think the grant process might be a good way to do it. Does that make sense? Or am I like off? I think it makes sense to do the grants. I'm, I'm thinking about your other thoughts on tying things into proclamations and wondering if, if staff can take a look at the list that, that we gave, because we have a really substantial list that we gave them. And maybe research events that are already happening and then maybe invite an organizer to accept or something among those lines. So that you're, you're, you're still supporting it as a city, but it doesn't have a cost associated with it.
I think I like all the suggestions, even reaching out on the grant proposal and to organizations that we may know, um, without being biased or, um, or, but I think also another layer of this that, that may just being birthed from our discussion is possible. And maybe Bruce, you can ask, connect what they're doing to one of our proclamations as a additional scoring or ranking of how much or what they can get. So that we can say that the events are aligning with what we're doing as a city and what we're proclaiming.
We opened the application process. I don't think we can add to the rubric this year, but I think next year, we, because it wouldn't be fair to the people who are already applying. Like, you know, to add another item to the rubric, because some people have already started doing it. But, um, I think it's not a bad idea for the next year's rubric, like add that. Is, is, are, is this connected to a proclamation? And if it is, it can get, right now, I think we're at 95 points, right? So that could be another five points that would get us to 100 points. I don't know if I feel if it's fair for, I'm looking at the Chamber, if it's fair to them, because they're already filling out their.
No, we've already submitted that, I think, about a week and a half ago. So I would say for future.
Yeah.
Applications.
But, um, I think it's, it's not a bad idea. I don't know how you feel about going through the proclamations. Do we have an organization that we think could do something in that space or is already doing it? And then invite them to the grant process? Because I, I'm just trying to figure out how to get the money.
Well, there are, like, like, like you said, we, we, we give a lot of proclamations for a lot of different things. But some of the proclamations are tied to international and national events and. and very large nonprofits, very large, well-known large profits, or cultural events. And so having staff look at things that, I'll give a very generic Earth Day, for example. Something along the lines that is universally acknowledged. And there are local groups. I would love to see these events open a door to participation for our local nonprofits. Especially, one of the things that I have really loved in the last few years tied to this are our ethnic and cultural diversity events that are coming into town. That it's, it is, it's just amazing how that has uplifted each of these different parts of the cultures in our community to want to be involved in all different aspects. Instead of feeling isolated and small, they help us all identify. And an event like this, I think, would be outstanding to be able to tie some of these to larger cultural and recognized events. How to do that, I think our staff is probably best equipped to come back with some of these ideas.
Can I mention, because we did, we did review the process of application for the grants for events through the LUD Committee. And I actually brought up, can we add five points for something that is culturally based? Because we want to encourage that. And because we were starting to see it, we want to make that grow, we want to see more of it. But I was told that we couldn't incorporate that into it. And Damon, can you clarify what that, there was some language around why that was not something that we could do?
I just, I heard you.
Was it Katie?
It was Assistant City Attorney Wazinski was at that meeting, so I wasn't at the meeting. And I don't want, as I wasn't there and part of the discussion, I don't want to make assumptions on what she said.
It was something to do, it was something to do with religious or ethnic specifications when it comes to grant money? That we can't specify those things, we can't require them, we can't give them addition, you know what I'm saying? It was like, it was a, there was legal reasons for that.
Your application process needs to be, needs to be neutral. And there are certain things that you can't base your applications and grants on unless you run afoul of the law. So I think I understand where she was going with that.
Yeah, and it made sense. It just, I, we were trying to do that. We were trying to find a way to really encourage the more diversity coming into the town through events, but we were not able to do that. But I do like the idea of the proclamations because it has some of the same impact without that direction specifically.
And there could be more flexibility with the proclamations because they are a wide range of different areas that you're recognizing that moves just beyond certain categories. And so there may be more flexibility there that we could certainly look at.
So do we have a motion regarding this?
I wanted to say one other thing. I think also what brought this to me was a call that I received from someone regarding, you know, if we don't have someone put, like, I think it's phenomenal that during Hispanic and Latin X Heritage Month, we had Mr. Aguilar in the chamber step up and throw an event. And if we didn't have people like that stepping up, then we just don't do one as a city. And those groups, we say we want to support diversity and inclusion and equity. And those groups are relying on, even for Juneteenth, we're not going to have one in our city, even though we're going to have one in our county. And for other groups, we're not going to have those type of events in our city if someone doesn't step up. And so I think if we can do it through the proclamation process as a start to have just this added little thing on our applications in the future, or if there are other suggestions that maybe Bruce or staff can come up with suggestions on how we can be more inclusive in our events that we provide. And to be more focused on quality events than I, wholeheartedly, this is what this is about.
I think also a list of all of the events that we have now would be helpful. Because we, I mean, our poor staff, I know they run ragged with what they have. I mean, they have the concerts in the park, they have the movies in the park. They now have, the youth events are all new this year, which is kind of along the same line of what you're saying. Like we wanted to bring in more events, and this is the first year with the youth. I just, let's just be cognizant of, you know, how busy they are because I know that they work really, really hard on the events they have. So I don't know how much, I don't think that, I don't know if you can take on being an event planner for additional events, I guess is what I'm saying. Or do we seek out people in the community that want to own it? Like kind of Oktoberfest and Cinco de Mayo, the really big ones? They're not owned by the city. You know, you look at cities like Clayton, they're all, their events are run by residents, they're not run by the city. And I don't know, do other cities run a lot of their own events or does it resident run?
Like Antioch, they've done the Celebrate Antioch Foundation, the nonprofit.
Yeah.
They've done a lot for Antioch, for example.
Yeah. I don't know, Bruce. I guess that will come back in your report.
Bruce, correct me if I'm wrong, I know when we came to do our meeting with you, Councilmember Orlamans, you did have a list of the events you provided to us. Do you still have that list or?
Yeah, we do have a list. I don't, I don't have it available this evening, but generally, we have, you know, 10 movies in the park. We have, or 10 concerts in the park on Friday evenings throughout the summer. We have four movies in the park. We have our tree lighting event. We do the Deck the Park event. And we have our Independence Day parade and celebration. So those off the top of my head are our main events. That's about 17 right there. Then you add on the Youth Commission events, events at the Aquatic Center, and all of the other events that we help facilitate through the special event process. And that number starts to add up to quite a few events going on, you know, around the downtown and the city. So there are a lot of things, but we'd be happy to review these and make sure that if there is an opportunity to do, you know, a few more events celebrating diversity and some of the things around the proclamations. The one thing about the proclamations is every single proclamation, we have people that are very passionate about the proclamations that are moving forward. And it would be difficult to have staff have, you know, the discretion of what they determine to be event-worthy. All of them are event-worthy. So that might be a little challenging. So maybe some direction from the council on those would be important. But we could bring it back to have that discussion.
I do have some fears about like discrimination, right? Like when you start going through and picking some and not another, and that's why I kind of like it to be resident-run. Because if you're a resident and you see them picking and choosing, how do we make sure that no one feels like they're being discriminated against? Whether it's religious or ethnic or gender or anything like that? Like, I mean, that's, I guess we can talk about that when it comes back, but we just got to make sure that no one's feeling, you know, discriminated against, right? Because, I mean, I'd love an LGBTQ one, right? And I'm sure there's going to be people that are not happy with that. So we just got to think about it.
Okay, with that, do I have a motion on this item?
I'd like to make a motion that this go back to staff to provide us with more clarity and direction as to bandwidth of staff, specifically Parks and Rec, on possible future events to support in addition to how we can update our application process to include an item for more points on supporting of proclamations.
Okay, we have a first.
A second.
Second, all in favor. I.
I.
Opposed, it is unanimous.
And if I can just clarify that motion, I'm sorry I didn't jump in, but staff is not getting direction to change the point structure right now. They're just getting direction to look in, just looking into it as part of this overall process because that point structure should be a separate agenda item. And so it just is, from what I understanding, it's just an overall look from staff at these different possibilities and coming back with some sort of report. Is that correct? Okay, thank you.
Okay, item E 2.3, a future agenda item request from Vice Mayor Meyer for the City Council Discussion of and Possible Direction to Staff related to potentially addressing the Healthy Places Index and the possible consideration of gentrification and displacement prevention policies in the draft Brentwood Boulevard specific plan planned for discussion fall of 2023. Vice Mayor.
That was a mouthful. This came up, I mean, we've had the discussion in the past about how to prevent gentrification and displacement, when we look at the Brentwood Boulevard specific plan. But when we started working on our housing element, there's a whole section on the Healthy Places Index, which is evidently a fairly new tool to diagnose and change community conditions that are all around the health outcomes and the things that feed into those. And so looking at our census tracts, there were two different sections, northwest and northeast Brentwood, that have lower percentile rankings for the Healthy Places Index. Since we're already talking about the Brentwood Boulevard specific plan, I would like to incorporate the Healthy Places Index into that discussion and also incorporate the discussion about prevention of gentrification and displacement. Because it has been expressed to us, it's a real concern by the residents there. What I don't want to do is bring the Brentwood specific plan ahead of time if it isn't something we feel as a council we're ready to address. That's why I was saying this doesn't need to happen immediately. I just want to be able to discuss this when we do bring it back. And I also don't want to make a request that's going to add a lot of these new criteria for reducing that. There's a, there was a chart in our healthy, excuse me, in our housing element that was showing some of the anti-displacement policies. For example, eviction ordinance and rent control and rent review board, mobile home rent control. There's a big, long list that the housing element included. And I believe we had four of them that we are currently doing. And I'm hoping to find some low-hanging fruit and some things that would not cause a major budget amendment that we can just do to, again, help the Healthy Places Index, potentially look at those issues of gentrification and displacement, and just make sure that as we look at the development of Brentwood Boulevard, that we don't look past some of the impact that the residents would feel that are currently living there.
Cue, at this time, we will open public comment. Margaret?
If you're in person, please file a speaker card. If you're participating via Zoom, please raise your hand. Remarks are limited to three minutes per person and your microphone will be muted after the timer has expired. No comments were received on this prior to the meeting. I have no speaker cards and no hands raised.
Okay, at this time, we will close public comment, move into council discussion regarding this item.
I think this is important, especially the gentrification and, you know, the healthy index. But I, can we do it outside of the Brentwood Boulevard specific plan? Because I thought we had shelved it. Like, I thought we had a discussion where we said we don't want to, we weren't happy with what we were seeing and we just shelved it and we're like, it's already zoned, right?
And that's in part, one of the reasons we did shelve it, was because of those concerns?
No.
As far as the displacement and gentrification, I mean.
But the, I guess if we're going to do a specific plan, remember all of those nodes? All of the nodes that we had and we're like, we don't want to see, like, we don't want that because that's changing the character of Brentwood Boulevard to, from what it is today to something totally different. So can we do this without doing, updating a specific plan? Because I still think this is important, but how do we do this without a specific plan update?
And that's a, that's a, it's a tricky question too, because I think about driving down Brentwood Boulevard. And I remember when we first moved here and we were driving down the street and there was an older gentleman in a wheelchair riding along, there was no sidewalks. And I think about the kids that are walking to and from school in those areas. And I think those, there are some really important improvements that we need to consider, but they don't include all the things like you're talking about with this big, huge plan that entirely changes that part of the city. It's more about the Healthy Places Index because certainly having a safe place to walk to and from school is a Healthy Places Index item.
So can we do it, just not the whole nodes section and not revamping what the heart of Brentwood Boulevard is?
So there's no one way to do this. The reason, so one of the reasons the Brentwood Boulevard specific plan wasn't well-received last time was because of the gentrification and displacement issues weren't addressed in the specific plan at the time, the way it was scoped. If we do bring this back, it was going to be in the fall and more like a revisit. It wasn't officially shelved based on council direction. We definitely put it on pause because we had other things going on and it was clearly not going in a direction that the council at that time was in favor of. But it's still a grant, it's still a budget item, it's still in the CIP. So the idea was a planning economic development would bring the specific plan back in the fall and recalibrate and say, what is it we want it to be, what is it we don't want it to be? We don't have to do this through that process, but if you're addressing gentrification and displacement in a meaningful way or the Healthy Places Index, most likely policy changes and land use changes would come out of that. And one way to implement those is a specific plan. Because right now, the zoning for this area of the city is in that specific plan. So if you want to address gentrification, you can create policies, displacement, you can create policies that most likely could be implemented through a specific plan. So it doesn't have to be done that way, but that is a comprehensive way to look at the whole area when it comes to infrastructure, access, funding of those capital projects. You can target them towards the goals and policies that council would develop as part of a specific plan process. Otherwise, it might be a little piecemeal and it might end up at the same result, but a less comprehensive way of doing it. Does that make sense?
Yeah, and, you know, you mentioned the rental, you know, the eviction. Can we start with those kinds of things now or do we have to wait for those later? I mean, we're seeing all these cities are protecting their renters and price hikes. And I think, like she said, that's low-hanging fruit. What prohibits us from starting that now?
Money, time, and council direction. So those types of things would require a lot of legal work, a lot of research, a lot of time. They would be controversial and contentious, there'd be lots of public hearings. So it's just not something that's in our work plan today. If council gave us direction to work on that, we would have to have a budget, probably outside consultant to help develop that. So it's just not in our work plan, that's what's preventing us from doing it today.
So I wish I'd put the page down on this chart. I'm looking at the printout of the chart that was from the housing element.
I have it here, if you want me to share my screen.
Yes, actually, that'd be great. Thank you. Thank you. So I think what I, as you can see, there's, it is five actually that we're doing. I don't know if there's anything outside of this chart that would be considered more low-hanging fruit that other cities are looking at. I know this chart was specific to the housing element, but I don't know that this needs to be restrictive, that everything we're looking at needs to come from this chart. It was more like a starting point to see if there is anything that can be considered low-hanging fruit or something that wouldn't have a huge impact on the budget that could still, again, either with the idea of reducing the risk of gentrification and displacement or increasing the Healthy Place Index for that area.
So most of the things in this chart aren't really low-hanging fruit. I would characterize what the city is doing, those five items, as the low-hanging fruit. That doesn't mean we can't do them. It's just something that isn't quick or easy to implement, these other items. If council directed us to work on this, we would come back, we could come back with a scope, budget, timeline. We're also doing a comprehensive zoning ordinance update, I mean, not comprehensive, a focused zoning ordinance update coming up in the next few months. That is going to take a lot of staff time and bandwidth. Like I said, these are really complex legally because you're dealing with private property and landowner interests and renters' interests. There are lots of advocacy groups that will come up, come into town and get involved. It's not to say we shouldn't do it, but it's not really simple, straightforward, right? It's something that is pretty involved and staff has a lot on its plate right now. So we'd probably rely pretty heavily on a consultant if council wanted us to take this on as well as the zoning and the other projects we have.
When it comes to the Healthy Places Index, are there, because this chart is more specific to anti-displacement, are there items there that we could potentially incorporate?
Possibly. I think we could look at the criteria more closely in terms of things that maybe, and characterize things that may be low-hanging fruit. But again, a lot of the ways But again, a lot of the ways we might address the Healthy Place Index would likely be through things that could be handled through specific plan policies, investment.
I'm thinking about zoning, like the fast foods and the smoke shops and things like that, yeah.
Exactly, and, or investment of capital resources, you know, towards more green spaces or infrastructure, or, so it, it is also something that might be best implemented through a comprehensive plan for that area of the city. Some of this displacement and gentrification, if you're talking about like a rent stabilization ordinance, that really would be citywide. It wouldn't necessarily be targeted to a particular neighborhood. So you'd be looking at that citywide, but the Healthy Places Index is really about an area of the city. And that's one thing a specific plan could do. I'm not saying the specific plan we started off with is, is the thing that would do that, but that is something a specific plan is meant to do, it is a plan just for an area of the city that has unique attributes and unique issues in how you want to address.
So really, the, the anti-displacement and gentrification, while it would support improvements there, would be citywide, it would just be, it isn't something you can just designate for one portion of the city?
So if you wanted to adopt ordinances and, and new practices related to that, that would be citywide. If you wanted to adopt policies, or actions, or zoning protections, you could do that at the neighborhood specific plan level. So it, again, there's different ways, different elements to this, the ordinances would have to be citywide.
Okay, this is obviously a very big, big discussion. I don't, I don't know if anybody else has any feedback on what they're thinking, this, where we go from here?
It sounds like we can do a part of what you want in the zoning update, right? Like, part of the healthy indexes, we can wrap into that. And then, I mean, I would love to do this, but I feel like we got to do that first. I mean, yeah.
Yeah, and I do think that's a big part of it. I mean, we looked, we were looking at the, the smoke shops when we put that moratorium in, and, and all of the zoning for smoke shops were in that specific area. So a large part of this would be improved by improving some of the zoning for some of these less healthy index items.
Yeah, and, and that's coming back to council for direction on what these might, maybe less than desirable land uses are that we might want to regulate differently, right? So we know tobacco because we have a moratorium, but there's another lit, you know, there's other items that we're going to seek council direction on, so then we can develop the right zoning policies. So that can be a filter through that process, right? Like I, like I said, we can be more intentional about these issues as we go through the process if that's, if council gives us that direction.
When, I'm sorry, when we do this zoning, remember how we did PA 1, and I know it took a long time? But we went line by line, but is that what we're going to do on the zoning?
That's not what we envisioned, because we're not doing a comprehensive update to the land use element, so we were going to talk about targeted zoning ordinance updates, and those would be specific land uses, specific land uses that council may want to regulate differently or eliminate from the city. We weren't necessarily going to go through the whole land use table, because that's not how we had scoped it out. It was really a focused update on those problematic land uses that council may want to treat differently, so.
Sorry. I was just going to ask, do you know about when it'll be coming back to council? Because I think what, it sounds like the expectation is, is that council's going to provide direction to staff on what areas, and I think if we kind of have a time, like, some estimate of time when it will come to council, we can prepare that list versus just having from Thursday to the Tuesday.
Yeah, so this is going to come to council in the summer. There, there's going to be, so back in January is when council authorized us to amend the scope to this project. So there's a couple pieces, separate pieces. So the, the special land uses discussion is going to come back to council for direction in a probably more workshop setting, but we, we can figure that out as we get there, and you'll have advance notice. I believe Councilmember Mendoza was the one that asked to have more time with the materials, so that certainly would be a part of it. So you have time to formulate and give us direction.
So I'm feeling like I can pause on some of this when it comes to the anti-displacement and gentrification until we are more prepared to look at the full-on strategic plan for that. I do think that we can have some of this targeted rezoning, or watching out for some of the zoning for some of the healthy index items that, that could potentially help. But I think the discussion could be ongoing based on what's coming before us. I think some of this can be incorporated into other discussions, like the zoning discussion, for example. I don't think it should be all fully tabled, but I don't know that it needs to come back for a report at this time, because it can be incorporated into other reports, just be a little bit more targeted.
Absolutely. Like I said, if we have council direction that this is, that these are issues council wants us to focus on when we work on these other projects, that can be another layer to our discussion about those other projects, right? So as you said, it could be a part of the zoning, what, what in this zoning ordinance update is addressing gentrification, displacement, and the Healthy Places Index? What in X specific plan is addressing displacement and, and healthy communities and that's? So if you give us that direction, that can be a filter through all these projects that we have coming forward.
So with that, do I need to make a motion to bring the discussion back for that, or can it be?
Ask one question real quick. So if I go through the table that we had for PA 1, and there's things that I'm, I feel strongly about, should I send those to you to make sure they're included in your zoning update? Because then if we get to the zoning update, and I'm like, this is important, and it's not there?
Hold on.
We're starting to move away from the specifics.
I'll call you offline.
Perfect, thank you.
So my question then would be, do I need to make a motion to bring this back to decide how to incorporate these into future discussions, or can I make a motion to say I'd like to recommend that we incorporate all of these different ideas into ongoing discussions as they are appropriate to whichever agenda item comes before us?
Yes, so here's, here's an idea.
Okay.
These are just titles of policies that the council and the public may not even be aware what these really would entail. So what we could do is come back in a month or so and give you a paragraph on what each of these policies would be encompassing, and flag for you which ones could be worked through the zoning, focused zoning code update, which ones would come maybe best through a, a specific plan, and which ones would be outside of that. And then let the council decide which of these policies is most important and a priority, and then we can come back with a scope of work and a cost estimate from consultant assistance, and then see what the council wants to do at that point. Right now, it's just a, a table of titles of policies that you may or may not even understand fully, right? So we want to make sure that you understand what direction you're giving us.
And it's not specific to this chart, as I was saying, a lot of this is more like the Healthy Places Index portion of it, which is, encapsulates a lot more than just the rent.
Yep, the zoning code ordinance will probably address some of that, and would help with that score.
And we can benchmark other cities and see what they're doing in the same areas, and, okay. I, I don't want to, I don't want to lose any of this. I think this has been really great discussion, and I don't want to lose what we've already questioned and, and added to the list as far as what we're looking at, so do I need to change? I mean, someone will watch the recording, I'm sure, so that, where do I need to go from here, Damian?
Well, if you want to give direction to staff, I'd recommend it be placed in a motion, and a motion that staff will understand. And so when it comes back, when staff brings something back, the council will say, yes, that's what we, that's what we asked you to do.
Okay.
So I, I don't know, if, if the city manager and our community development director feel that they have clear direction at this point on what you want to see.
What I can say, and let's see if this works, is that I would like to see staff keep track of this recorded, recorded discussion to, as I said, no.
Need to be a lot more specific. So why don't we come back with a list of what all these policies do, and some characterization of what the Healthy Places Index score, policy considerations would look like, and then, then the council can really understand what direction to be given.
As long as we're not losing anything from this discussion, because this has been very productive.
Yes.
Okay. Then I'm good with that.
Well, we'll see what that looks like when we come back, right?
Yeah. I'll listen to it, too.
And I'll second that.
Thank you.
We have a first and a second, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
It is unanimous. Before I call for the motion to adjourn, I would like to adjourn today's meeting in memory of April Brown. Before I read all of this, for those of us that had the privilege and pleasure of, of working with and talking to April over the years, there are very few people that you will meet in your life that, within the first moments that you meet them, the word professional, elegant, caring, brilliant, those are adjectives that, that in my opinion, fall short of describing who she, she was as a person. You could not talk with her and not feel like you mattered to her and that she had heard and seen you. And that was, that's a rare gift that a person has. She was a member of our Brentwood city family who recently passed away. She was the administrative secretary. April Brown started with the city in 2008, coming to us from the Liberty Union High School District, where she had served as a high school registrar. April was a treasured member of the city attorney's office, where she directly supported two attorneys and was responsible for the office filing system. And if you ever want to know about that or see it, Damian will proudly walk you through the phenomenal system that they have in his office. In addition, she was frequently tasked with special projects, which she always completed with dedication and efficiency. She was the first person visitors met when they came to the city attorney's office, and the office could not have asked for a better representative. While quiet and never one to brag, her fellow employees recognized April's abilities and principles early on. After only two years with Brentwood, they nominated her to receive one of the city's five annual Core Value Awards. In 2010, she won the Core Value Award for Respect. April is immediately survived by her husband, Irvin, and daughters Cece and Jasmine, as well as a host of extended family and friends. She will be greatly missed in this organization, but leaves us all with wonderful memories of her wit, compassion, and thoughtfulness. And with that, I will take a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
We have a first and a second, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Thank you, we are adjourned.